...at home because they're not bad at home and good kids, but they're kids. But, you know, we always go out and wonder, "Do you talk to other adults that way like you just talked to me?" And, you know, I don't. So, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you. I just sent an email to have that reset, so it should by tomorrow morning be. And so your pastor will go back to the THR. I think he had it changed in some spots.
I had changed.
Oh, okay.
You have a lot of problems with them and they need it, don't you?
No. At first it should have been.
My guys are. There's a handful of guys that are constantly.
Actually, when I did yours, I got one of the firemen's reset also, so. Yeah, so.
How are you? Any word on, did you guys hear about the accident that Jennifer Delisle and I witnessed? It was a different background.
Yeah.
Oh.
When?
Uh, she had a diabetic seizure.
Really?
Yeah.
Jennifer did?
No, 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 no.
Oh.
But, uh, yeah, 'cause, uh, she kinda took off down the road, of course. Boyfriend or husband picked her up. The ambulance ended up picking her up and crossing the paths and her blood sugar was way up and she was, she was, she was mad.
Got it. Well, that's what it does. That's what it does.
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty hard to fake your blood sugar.
Right. I would think that would be very difficult to do.
Yeah, but on the onset, I had every, every, uh, what's the word? Or, uh.
Indication, evidence?
Evidence.
They're probably sitting up like this.
Yeah, yeah.
On a, on a pole.
You don't see that every day.
I did it three years ago.
Five minute nap.
Well, I wanted to take longer, but that's when I first got the first call. Sister tried. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
She's like, "Oh, you can't tell me." I'm like, "Fuck." Well, you're telling me anything until I talk to somebody. Probably won't be able to talk to anybody until he's ready.
It may, maybe, but it makes a fuck out of something.
Yeah. Well, I suppose, yeah. That was so good. When that trainer came in and her brother got arrested for waving a gun and she didn't know what to do, she came in. They wouldn't, they wouldn't hurt her.
Exactly. I think that was probably half the truth anyhow, because, uh, she, you know, he can be, and he can always find those unless, you know, privilege was taken away. But if she went in, there's only seven seconds.
Right. I don't think she ever went in. I think she was too scared.
Yeah, well, she couldn't, no, she couldn't look at it.
Right.
But it was easy on her side.
Yeah, yeah.
Local lockups for some reason. Yeah.
Good, bad, or indifferent? That's good, I think. Sort of.
Might as well.
Yeah.
I haven't talked to Brad to see how he's liking working for Jackson. Press officer of Jackson. He went through that training, just like the boot camp.
Just got an email. They just, you know, modify this again. You know, they're active or coming out.
Oh, yeah.
They're doing instead of the level 13 or 15 or 570 hours, they're allowing you like 240 hours to get their certifications.
Really? That's interesting.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's a good thing.
I do, too.
Just to put the effort in. Trying to hire some military employees and going through all the training.
Right, right, right.
Bring it to good use, put it on the street.
Sure.
They've already got the skill, the tactics, stuff. Although, like, the, you know, the military medic versus paramedic.
My brother was one.
And they're allowed to do a lot more in the military.
Yeah, my brother was one. And then his unit got changed and they didn't have the medical positions.
Oh, okay. That's what, uh, Turkey was in. Shall I have something else?
Thank you, sir. Well, yeah.
Hello, Mr. Jack.
I don't want to say anyone's, I don't want to be against it.
I'm sure they're seeing. You didn't get a pack?
Yeah.
Just so you could saw. Didn't at first, so I thought I didn't have to come to the meeting where I saw him appear to my book, my mail box.
You gassed to come to the meeting.
Have you got everything under control?
Well, maybe, but you're my security buddy.
Yeah, right.
Good evening, everyone. I guess let's call the meeting to order, and if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shelley's not gonna be able to attend tonight, so she's absent with notice. Um, I guess I can do the roll call? Thomas?
Here.
Otto?
Here.
Instrom?
Here.
Docket?
Here.
Bronn?
Here.
Chick?
Here.
All right.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, the consent agenda, the minutes and bills.
I'd like to have both in poll, please.
Okay. We will make, uh, we will move the minutes down to...
Unless you, unless you want me to just ask the secretary, the gal there, one little quick question.
Yeah, that's fine, if you wanna do that.
Okay. Uh, on the, uh, number, phase number two, the first in the top column on the right, it said, uh, ends could move auto supporter that the employment of the assistant, uh, assessor related to that. I protested that, I did not vote, so. You got, I, I know that you probably thought it was seven to zero, but I made a statement that I was protesting the fact that the lady was fired and wasn't notified of the meeting. I did not vote. Thank you. That's all I need.
Was it abstaining from voting or voting?
I protested and I did not vote, period. However you wanna put it.
Okay, so then you're okay with the minutes, then, Wayne?
I'm okay with them.
Okay, great. We'll leave the minutes right there. We'll move bills down to the rest of the agenda, and we'll make that number 17.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Uh, Thomas, um, it's been a while since our meeting. The Thomas motion, chick supported. Uh, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
On to the adopt the balance of the agenda. Does he have, does anyone have anything they need to add or adjust, or? Nope? All right.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Support.
Thomas motion, chick supported. Any discussion?
What was, what was that, I mean?
Uh, just adopting the balance of the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes? Okay. Right on to call to the public. Now, I'll remind everyone, it's a, not a question and answer session, just a chance to talk, and we try to limit it to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight? Great, come on up. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Yep, there's a switch on.
You got it on there?
Mm-hmm. Okay, now it is. I think we need this, but that's okay. Um, my name is Lisa Kraft. I'm a trustee and member of the Horseshoe Lake Corporation, and I hold the office of vice president. Our president's sitting over here. And I'm, I'm here to just to petition, um, the sewer district monies that was, um, collected several years ago when the sewers got put in at Horseshoe Lake in the late seventies. When that project was completed, there was a surplus of monies, I believe somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000, and that account has just been sitting, no one can touch it. It has to be associated and used only for Horseshoe Lake or for the sewer district. We have a bridge down in my subdivision, the Stroms subdivision off of Main Street, that's been down for two and a half years. It does pose health risks. Um, we only have one bridge that's standing, and I'm basically on the island if that bridge goes down. So, we really need to get that other bridge up and running, and we have no money to do it. Our corporation is about 600 members, and we charge $20 a year in membership, which is really nothing. We have insurances, we have lawsuits, we have a lot of things we pay for. And, uh, we're really struggling to get some money together to pay for the construction or the, um, just getting this bridge up and running again. So, I'm petitioning to, for have someone to look at that money, that fund. It could be used for Horseshoe Lake. There's water underneath this bridge that's could be tied to the sewers, and, um, we could really use part of that money if possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Jim Morrison, 77, 77 Sutton Road. Um, I'd like to ask you guys to, uh, think about opening or broadcasting the, uh, preparatory meetings, the workshop meetings. I found the last one incredibly educational. Uh, it showed, uh, there was a lot of stuff discussed and revealed, um, and none of it, none of it was bad. None of it was technical. There was an explanation from, about the, uh, the financial problems, um, that attended the, uh, the investment decisions, which were apparently made by the previous board. There was a discussion of, of Munich Code, the general code, the codification contracts, which, um, a process like, you know, I'd known nothing about, I was completely unaware of. I didn't know people codified. I thought they always just had a big pile of paper and lawyers waded through it. This stuff's educational, but people need to see this. We've got very little influence on politics at large in this country. The local government is the only place that is even standing a chance of, of being transparent nowadays. Nobody has any influence on anything external to local government. I mean, they're not even listening to us in Washington. We don't, we don't exist to them. You guys are the local government. You're standing in for all of us. And, 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 uh, any educate, any way of educating people, any opportunity we can give them to see the kind of information that was revealed, you know, like, the explanation of, of the, uh, the website, the, the, the potential website contract. It's invisible to people unless they see, uh, a presentation like we saw last week. Um, there was a discussion of the sewer assessment district, a presentation of liability issues. I was unaware that the, the township was backing, um, sewage benefits that accrued to, uh, 24 property owners somehow. We are all on the hook in case one of them goes under. Uh, ultimately, I guess, and this is something to learn from the meeting. We can get the money back, but we're paying for it if somebody defaults. Most of this stuff, most people don't know. I found the meeting highly educational, the discussion of, of the investment decisions made by the previous board or not made by the previous board and handed off by default to somebody. Most, most of the township doesn't know anything about. $300,000 is, is, is gone right now, and, you know, it comes back in 14 years, but that's 14 years, and in the meantime, though, that money can't be used for something else. It can't be used for better investment. You're actually losing money on two fronts. And, and Howard brought in somebody, Howard recognized the problem. I mean, you've got to hand it to Howard because he is really on the ball. He's, uh, looking out for us. The discussion of the sewer backup ordinance and, and the sewage problems that, that happened to one person, I think she's in the audience today. This stuff people need to see, and you can give them the opportunity to see it. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Mary did call me a few minutes ago and told me she was, "Oh, you can come tonight."
Oh, okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? All right. And for anyone watching that, not sure what, um, what our last speaker was talking about, we are having workshops prior to every meeting that is open to the public, and it's a chance to, in an informal way, to chit chat about, you know, um, current things going on for long presentations and things like that. So, everyone is welcome to come. Um, the, the dates are posted outside for everyone to know when they're happening. Okay, now let's move on to our reports. And I'll keep it in order this time of how they are in your package, okay, package, okay, you guys? Uh, let me see, and if we're doing that, that means, Bill, you're up first.
Thank you. The Northfield Township Fire Department responded to 67 requests for service in July of 2013. This is about the same when compared to July of 2012, when we responded to 69 calls. Of the requests for service, 13 of them were motor vehicle accidents, nine, 19 requests were fire-related, 29 were medical emergency calls. Of the fire calls, two, two were residential fire alarms, three commercial fire alarms, two were natural gas leaks, two were structure fires, three vehicle fires, and five wires down call. We also had two public assists and one hazardous materials call. Of the responses for the month, 49% were in the hamlet, 41% were in the rural area, with the remaining being mutual aid outside of the township. Mutual aid calls for the month, we assisted other agencies six times and received assistance four times. The average response time for the month was six minutes and 40 seconds. Uh, significant call for the month, uh, was the drowning in Whitmore Lake. This actually occurred in the Green Oak Township side. We did assist Green Oak for three days with, uh, rescue and recovery efforts, and the body surfaced on the fourth day. Any questions for me?
Wayne? I've got more than a question, but, uh, here, says, uh, here on number four, the tragedy, uh, second, third paragraph. This was just another example of the need for a boat for the police and fire department. When this call came in, we were required to respond to Max Marine and ask for, uh, help for a boat, for to make a boat available to us. Uh, I said, "I would ask that the board consider splitting the cost of a boat between general fund, grace fund, and, and, uh, fire fund, $25,000." Well, I guess it's the old story, you know, never, never let a tragedy go by without, you know, striking where the iron is hot. We do not need a $25,000 boat. You've got quite a bit in your report here, but you failed to say that after four days, the body was found by a civilian. It wasn't found by all the people out there. So, I don't know why you left that out of your report. And, uh, we have to give you $25,000 out of the year, out of our general fund, just for you to get by, as it is with the equipment and the people you have. The, the good taxpayers of Northfield Township, give you around $700,000 a year, somewhere around there. I might be off by a little. And I don't know where you think you're gonna get another, you know, if you, if you get this $25,000, then it's, you know, I, I would like to see you maybe, uh, partner with Green Oak. Send some of your people up there to, to, to go through training, like, like you do with, with how they help us out on other things, and, uh, I would think that'd be a good place to start if you wanna train your people, the seven to Green Oak, and, uh, and have shared, shared, uh, responsibilities on the lake. Uh, thank you very much. Now, I, I would also like to, I noticed that there was a lot of thanking Sam for all he did, and I would like to thank him and Ann, uh, at this time, for all the help they, they did put in, but I'd like to add Ann to that. Thank you.
Would you like me to respond to that, or?
Oh, yeah. Sure.
Um, I, I guess my, my response to it is, I, I think water rescue and lake patrol in this lake community that we, we live in is kind of just a basic service that we in the police and fire department should provide. Um, we've never had, that I'm aware of, a boat. Uh, we, we used to have wave runners that, on an annual basis, were donated to us for the year, and then we'd have to send back. We do train with Green Oak. We do have shared response out there, but I can tell you, for both the last two drownings, um, other than the deputy chief on this last one from Green Oak beating us out there because they got the call both times, um, our personnel were on the scene first without really the ability to do much because we don't, we didn't have the boat to get out there. Um, and, and I can't tell you that in either case, it would or would not have made a difference. I can tell you, in the drowning two years ago, that we had a police officer standing on the shore that could see the, the victim yelling for help and could do nothing to, to get to him. Um, uh, we, we were able to put firefighters on boats in this case, just because Sam had them available at this time, was in the middle of the day. Um, but, but I guess I feel that it's a basic service that, that we should provide. Um, you know, we have several lakes in the community. Um, I think the citizens expect us to provide that service, um, and I, I guess I didn't feel good about myself if I wasn't gonna try to do everything possible. I've written two grants and, and been denied on both of them, uh, since the last drowning, so it's been two years. I've been working on trying to partner with the Washtenaw County Marine Division. It's really gone nowhere between the attorneys. We've had, uh, it's gone back and forth, back and forth between our attorneys, and it gets set aside for six months and then nothing gets done. Um, so, and they're asking us to do a little more than, than I'm really even comfortable with doing, and so it, I, I, alls I did was ask the board to consider it. Um, at least I'll know going after tonight that I tried to do what I could do to, to, to try to get a boat, uh, for not only rescue, but for patrol in the summer for our police department, so. And ultimately, it's a board decision.
Oh, I'm sorry, Janet?
Yep, so that was actually my question. Um, since the police department, the township, and the fire department would be contributing to vote, the, it would also be used to patrol the lake?
Yes. We have marine-trained personnel in the police department.
And my thought is, is that prevention?
Yep.
Yeah, would be beneficial, uh, in helping in these kind of instances, and if you've got somebody out on the lake, people are less to, inclined to be, have, I don't wanna say reckless behavior, but that goes on, too, and that could cause an accident. I personally have knowledge of that myself, but, um, I, I see absolutely no disadvantage to having a boat on that lake to help service our community.
Anyone else have any comments? Jackie?
So, do you need the board to make, uh, someone to make a motion?
If, if that's the board's desire to, to move forward with it, then, then that's what we would have to do. I mean, I'm willing to work anything I can work. I can tell you, in the grants that I've written, I was, just for the boat, the trailer, that kind of stuff, I was requesting, um, uh, 22,000 or 23,000 for the boat, but as I, I think I mentioned in here, after talking with Sam, I think I can get it cheaper than that if we kinda put it together ourselves with it. It's like when you go to buy a fire truck, it's just a lot more expensive because it says "fire truck." Um, I think if we go about it, buy a boat, um, put some of the stuff together ourselves, we have a, a police officer or a reserve officer that has a, a training in putting lights on these types of things, so, you know, we, we can do that internally, um, to try to save some money. So, while whatever it is you decide to vote on, we will be conscientious to try to get the best deal that we can get for the boat that will service what we need it to do.
Well, before making any decisions, would you want to go out and get maybe some estimates to?
I, I can do that. I can certainly do that. Um, I, I just never had, you know, even the money to be able to get to that point, so if we have the money to, you know, uh, earmarked to go to that, then I can certainly go out and get, get bids for such a thing. There's not a lot of companies out there that make rescue fire boats or rescue police boats, but if we go about it through, um, kind of putting it together ourselves, I think, uh, I think we can probably get it cheaper.
Do you need a motion to direct you to do that?
Sure.
Okay. I move to direct township, I'm sorry.
Could we have, like, a long-term, something more than just the cost, but like going forward, you know, like you would a business plan to a bank, for example, as to how much it's gonna cost for the next five years, and where would that money come from?
As far as maintenance?
Yeah, maintenance.
Training?
If it go wrong, I had a boat, I have a boat.
Yeah. Well, it would just, it would become part of the, it would become part of the maintenance of, we, you know, we, we maintain preventative maintenance stuff, most of it ourselves in-house.
I know, but we, we just, so we could see those numbers, and whose budget it would come from, insurance, things like that. There's an ongoing cost to a boat.
Sure.
I mean, it's a hole in the water.
Sure. And how about, you know, what's your idea, you know, to keep it on a trailer, or do you wanna have it in the water all season?
You know, I, I've had people tell me to keep it on a tra, or, keep it on Whitmore Lake, and, and Sam has offered us a spot there, but because we have a couple of other lakes, I'd rather just keep it on a trailer, drop it in the lake where, which lake we need it at, um, just, just for that reason. Um, I don't, I'd rather not have to go and pull it off the lake and then take it to Horseshoe Lake. Um, I'd rather have it on the trailer, ready to go. We get the call, we hook it up, and we go to whichever lake we need it on.
All right.
I'd like to, I'd like to expand on Kathy. And that's exactly it. You talk about a boat, it's the camel's nose under the tent, then you gotta have the trailer, then you gotta have something to pull it with, insurance upkeep.
We, we.
Training, you know, it's a lot of money, and I certainly wanna know where the money's coming from.
Sure. The, the, um, the price that I put on there actually included a trailer, and it, it included the whole package. Um, I'm guessing the insurance would come up, be split between police and fire. Uh, for fire training, it would just become part of one of our annual trainings that we already do. We've got, like I said, uh, we have a marine officer that can train both our police and fire in, you know, marine law and marine safety. Um, and like, like I said, when we had the wave runners before, we, we trained with them. I believe we insured them. We had to pay for maintenance for them, and it, it came out of the respective departments.
Vehicle to pull it with.
We, we have, yeah, we have several vehicles that we can pull it with. Already, we don't need to purchase a vehicle to pull it with, I guess, if that's what you're asking.
All right. Well, if you could put something together for us that we can, then maybe move forward in a direction. Uh, Janet, will you?
No, I was gonna make a motion to direct, um, Public Safety Director William Wagner to acquire three estimates for the purchase and equipment outfitting of a patrol rescue boat for Northfield Township.
Did you say equipment?
Equipped, oh, equipment.
Each person that's on the boat's gonna have to have equipment.
Well, you mean a life jacket? That, yeah, we obviously will have, we already have life jackets, but we would probably Yeah, we obviously will have, we already have life jackets, but we would probably, you know, purchase life jackets with them also. Or at least the minimum of the maximum amount of people in the boat.
And I'd like to include also at least a five-year expense sheet going forward.
Okay.
I'll second your motion. So, chick motion, Inkstrom supported. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Anything else for Bill? Okay. Let's move on to Lieutenant Green.
The Northfield Township Police Department responded to 572 complaints during the month of July 2013 and handled eight mutual aid responses inside the township and 11 outside the township. Of the total complaints answered, 65% of them were handled in the Hamlet area and 35% were handled throughout the rest of the township. The average response time on calls for service was five minutes and seven seconds. Officers generated a total of 38 arrests and worked a total of 2,069 hours. Itemized listing of monthly activities is attached. Also, there's an agreement with, I think with everybody's packet, that it's the annual agreement with the Drug Enforcement Administration between Northfield Township for the assignment of the task force officer. So therefore, I would recommend the Board of Trustees approve the provincial, state, and local task force agreement between the Drug Enforcement Administration and the Northfield Township Police Department.
Does anyone have any questions? For Tim? Does anyone have any questions for Tim?
Aye, I have a, I have something I'd like to read because this board is brand-new. This officer is assigned to the Detroit Division DEA Task Force. He is not on our roster at the Northfield Township Police Department, but the Northfield Township taxpayers pay this officer his paycheck along with all his benefits, health insurance, PTO, vacation, clothing allowance, death benefits, retirement, sick pay, all the equipment like safety vests, flashlight, radio, police car, which we just got a brand-new one, I think it's our third or fourth for this guy, tires, credit card for gas, which he gets every day, and maintenance of the police car. The tax, the Northfield Township pays have been, excuse me, the township taxpayers have been all paying this for over four years. I think that this township pays for a lot of classes for the employees. I think that Mr. Green and Mr. Wagner need to take an accounting class. You only give the board one side of this account, accounts receivable, $344,761. Now, accounts payable, it's blank, nothing there. So, if you wanna tell us that this guy brought in $344,771, forty-seven cents over a four-year period, I would like to see the, on the other side, the payables. I don't believe that we got enough back to pay these bills from this guy. So, I think at best it might be a wash. So I'd like to have this board know what's been going on for four years, and I just didn't want them to make a real big, fast vote on this without thinking about it. Thank you very much. It's a lot of money.
I would also add, one of your, while he has brought in around that $344,000, he's also overdue around $600,000 waiting to, waiting, we're waiting.
We've heard that for four years, chief, about, about selling an airplane. I'd like to know if the airplane was a Piper Cub or a 747. I mean, you know, we've been waiting for this money to come in for four years, and so far, we spent more than we got in, in my opinion. I just want the people on the board to know what's going on with this for four years.
Yep. I don't disagree.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Thoughts, motions?
I'd like to say something about, or ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
It says here, the terms of this, that's on number seven page, whatever, I guess there's no page numbers. Number seven on the third page of this, the terms of this agreement shall be effective from the date in paragraph number one in paragraph number one, September 30th, 2014. When I look at paragraph number one, it has absolutely nothing on here about when this, or what this is for. But now, in paragraph two, in paragraph two, it does say that it is for two years. That's what it says here. Third paragraph down, paragraph, it says accomplish the objective of the provisional Detroit task, Detroit Division Task Force, and Northfield Township agrees to detail one experienced officer to the provisional Detroit Division Task Force for a period of not less than two years. During this period of assignment, the officer will be under the direct supervision and control of the DEA supervisor personnel assigned to the task force. In other words, we have nothing to say about where this guy works or whatever, he's under Detroit. But it says two years here, so I'm just, I'm confused on rather, on page, on seven, it says the agreement is for one year. I guess it's for September 30th, 2014. I don't see where it spells out how long it's for.
The original agreement, when he first got put in there, was two years. And after the two years, it has to get renewed every year.
Excuse me?
After the two years, it has to get renewed every year. And this board had also made it a policy previously that they wanted the renewals to come back to them every year for them to vote on. So that's why every year this comes up and it requires.
Should we take this two years out of here then? I mean, why?
Well, like I said, the two years was the original agreement. It's the same agreement that we signed originally.
Well, if we sign this, it's for, if we sign it, it's for two years.
Yeah, we can take, we can take the two years out. That's not a problem, but it is only for one year.
Excuse me?
It is only for one year.
Okay, well, it was confusing to me. Thank you.
Any other comments, thoughts? Okay, well, with the corrections that we've discussed right here, do we want to put a motion on the table to adopt this new contract? Yeah, okay, go ahead, Janet.
Okay, I move to approve the provisional state and local task force agreement between the Drug Enforcement Administration and Northfield Township Police Department to be effective October 1st, 2013 through September 30th, 2014.
Chick motion, Thomas supported. Any discussion?
I would just like to say I won't be supportive. I would like to see, I'd like to see how much this officer has cost us over the last four years. And I can see what's been brought in, but there's nothing that shows how much the officer has brought in. Thank you.
Do we have those numbers somewhere? Is there something that you can bring to the board to show what it has cost us?
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem to put that together.
Would you like?
Where did we get that information?
Would you like that before we pull the motion and you want to see that prior to? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Okay, on to our next report. And that would be Tim from the wastewater treatment plant.
Who's that, Tim?
Tim.
I will try and keep this short. First thing I have is John White passed his Class D wastewater license exam, and Brian McDonald passed his Class C exam. These are significant accomplishments that I want the board aware of. It's not, they're not easy tests, so proud of both of them. They study hard, and they're all hard workers. Just to let the board know, we have a great crew up there. They're very, very good workers. I'm very lucky to inherited them and have them. And the second thing is, is I'm looking for the board's direction on the backup from back in April at 9226 Hillcrest for the Johnsons. Back at the workshop three weeks ago, I gave you the long version of all of the paperwork from the Johnsons and from our insurance company. And so, this time, I mean, you have what the Johnsons are looking for, for damages, and I just would like to know if the board has a direction they would like to go with this.
I guess for me, I would like to see something submitted to their homeowner's policy to state that their insurance company is not gonna pay for this. I think our insurance company made the claim known of what they were going to do in their intent. I think her insurance, uh-uh, her insurance company needs to do the same and then bring it back to the board again.
I believe that at the workshop, Ms. Johnson indicated she was not gonna turn it into her insurance company. Am I correct in that?
That's right, that's what she said.
I provided a letter to everybody yesterday.
Okay, I did not.
From my insurance company.
I did not get that letter.
I attached the email that I sent to the board. Okay. I got, you saw the letter?
Can you speak to what the letter said?
Can she come up to the mic? I can't hear.
Can you come up to the mic, please?
Yes, I received a letter from my insurance company yesterday, and it says, "Thank you for your recent home claim inquiry. Our investigation is complete, and we have concluded that the damages were the ensuing result of wear, tear, and deterioration of the main sewer line outside of your property. The home policy specifically excludes this type of loss. As a result, there can be no coverage extended for this claim."
Okay.
But I did, I emailed it yesterday, and I copied everybody on the board from the website.
Okay, so they're specifically saying that they're not paying because it happened outside your home?
Because it was not on my property. It was the public line that was the problem.
Okay.
And they, from the way I read it, they see it as wear and tear on the line, so lack of maintenance or something.
We can ask questions.
thereof.
Yeah.
Did you send that information to the township, ma'am?
I sent, I emailed this letter yesterday afternoon.
Oh, okay.
To, to.
Mr. Dockett doesn't have email.
Okay, well, there was an email address for him on the website. Yes, he does.
The rest, the rest of it.
And I got, I, did I press read receipts? I got two, one from Michelle and one from Howard.
Did everybody get it?
Yeah, and my apologies because I did not open my email yesterday.
But I did send it. And I've got a copy if you, this is an extra copy if you'd like it.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. Thank you. I did not get my email. I have a email down there, but I didn't get it.
So, my thinking is.
I don't get it that fast.
My thinking is it's a condition of your policy, that they're not actually saying the responsibility is the township's, because if they were aware of the Michigan codified law, they would know that it's not the township's responsibility, but it's a condition of your plan, contract, that they won't pay if the occurrence is outside of your property line.
Well, the way I read it is they're saying it's not their responsibility because it's not on my property, which my homeowner's insurance covers my property. The problem was down the road from my house, which is township property.
All right. Well, obviously, everyone has the numbers in their package, and we have actual cash value, the replacement cost. Need to get maybe a feel for everyone for where you stand, if it should be somewhere in between those numbers or one of those numbers that are listed.
I will say, I did check with Mr. Cox, and in the past, we have paid what people were asking for without questioning what they were turning in, and the last time, we also paid the difference of what the insurance paid. So we have, we have basically done it both ways as far as what we reimburse the homeowners for.
And the reason for my question was in the event that the insurance company would have reimbursed, then I, then to know what that difference was. So, that's the reason for my question.
Since precedence has been established before we adopted the MCL as part of our township ordinances, that as a courtesy, we should be willing to do something.
Well, I looked at the list, a lot of it was ladies' things, and I would have no idea, you know, on these prices, some of them were quite high, I thought, especially for used clothing. But, so I, I mean, I, just about any insurance company, if they're paying, they don't pay the replacement cost.
Correct.
I mean, I'm not trying to get out of anything. I think if we charge somebody to look up to the sewer, they have no choice, and they have to pay their bill. I'm just stating the fact that for retail on this stuff, I don't think they would get from anybody. That's just my take on it.
You can, come on up. Thanks. We want to get this settled tonight, boy.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I understand what you're saying, which is why if you look at some prices, I had to guess at because I didn't know. If you look at the list, I sent a list that I supplied to the township, itemized list with pictures, quantities, dollar amounts. The insurance adjuster came out to our property, went through it line by line by line by line. You know, how many did you have? How long did you have it? That sort of thing. If you look at what the insurance adjuster sent, it has two numbers on it. One is the replacement cost, and one is the actual value. And his replacement cost is a little bit less than what we had because there are some things like a computer that we did pay $1,200 for that you can get for a whole lot less now. Okay, so there are, our number was, I didn't bring that page up here with me, but a total of somewhere around $8,000. His replacement cost total for the contents and the repair of the bathroom is about $7,000.
Well, the paper I'm looking at, replacement cost, number one, $4,304. Does that sound like a right number to you?
That's, that's, he broke, and I, I can't.
And then number two was $19,000.
Right, right. And then there's a third piece, which is for putting the bathroom back together.
His replacement was $6,223.77.
Right, but that does not include the estimate for the bathroom. The bathroom was sent as a separate item. He sent that in separately unless I completely read that wrong. Yeah, he, that's only for the contents. The bathroom was a separate, separate piece because the vanity was ripped out, the faucet was thrown away, the pipe was cut when they pulled it out.
Regardless of that, your total, you're asking for is $8,400. Is that what?
That was, that was the numbers that I put together, yes. And your insurance adjuster's totals were $7,000. I just wanted to make sure that there's a whole bunch of different numbers here.
So what's our choices? We can do nothing, we can do something, we can.
We can do something, and then the question is, how much are we doing?
Well, first of all, can we, two pieces? Can we find out if we're, if we're on base for doing something?
There, we.
I mean, if we, if we can do something, then maybe we can decide what we're going to do. But if we're not going to do anything, then we need to know that.
So, so I think you're fine dealing with this issue independently as a, as a, on occasion like...
I'm sorry, I don't...
I think you are fine dealing with this issue independently. This backup occurred before we started the discussion of adopting MCL code as it relates to sewer backups. I think it's appropriate that the, and I shouldn't say appropriate, I think you are within your realm and rights and you would not be setting a precedent by doing something in this case. I think there are three questions that need to be asked. Wayne is correct. First question is, do we do nothing or do we do something in terms of a cash settlement? The second question is, do we believe that the value of the cash settlement should be replacement cost or should it be actual value of the property? Those two numbers are anywhere from maybe $2,000 to $3,000 difference. So, I think the first question is, do you do something for a settlement? And then the next question is, is it on the neighborhood of $4,000 or is it in the neighborhood of 6200? Well, our, right, the lady in the audience is looking for 8,000, but our numbers would indicate 6200. So, I would probably make a recommendation that you look at either the 6200 or the 4,000 in terms of replacement costs versus the actual value of the, of the items. So, I think you've got essentially two issues on your hands and...
Can we vote on, are we going to do anything?
I don't know if we even need a vote to say, you know, a motion to say what we're, you know, if we're going to pay or anything would be, you know, obviously the action item or, tell us what you got.
We've got to do something.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, if it's been done before, in this case, she's gone through all the trouble, we've sent our adjuster out there to go through this, to say zero at this point, I don't think anybody's going to do. I do think that the numbers should be closer to actual cash value than replacement value for retail items. But I don't know what to do about the bathroom because the bathroom isn't something that you can just go by used. What I would do is I would say the actual cash value of $4,413.13 plus an estimate as to what the bathroom is going to cost to replace, that would be how I would vote. And that's going to give us around, I would imagine that's going to give us around five grand or so depending on what the bathroom... I, I, I'm looking, I don't see the bathroom estimate. It wasn't in the stuff that we, we provided last time. And if I'm missing it, I apologize.
It should have been in the packet for the workshop.
Oh, okay.
I just assumed you all had it and I didn't want to bring all that again.
Okay.
Okay, I am not sure. So, there's also damage to a bathroom, is that what you said?
Correct, yeah.
And what did you say just now that you thought that figure might be? Or did you say they were going to have to find out?
Let me ask the owner, what's the bathroom estimate?
The insurance adjuster estimated it at $840.
I would add $840 to $4,413.13 and I would be comfortable voting that figure.
Support?
Hold on, he needs to make a motion.
Yeah.
I hadn't made a motion yet, but I can turn that into a motion. I would be...
That would be a great idea, if you don't mind.
Let's get rid of it.
Okay. I would move that the township enter into a settlement of this claim for the sum of $4,413.13 plus an additional $840, whatever that figure adds up to.
I believe it adds up to...
How much?
According to my esteemed counsel over there on my right.
Now we have to go to law school.
Okay, so...
I support.
Okay, well, we need a, we need a second. You want to second the motion?
Well, I support the motion.
Okay. Well, I...
No, we got to have some, we got to have some discussion.
I know.
I want to know where the money's going to come from.
So, we have a motion, we have, okay. But down here, I've heard some discussion, should we just round it up to 5,300?
Okay.
Want to do that, everyone? Okay. Can you adjust that motion to round it to the 53? Okay.
Forget the 13 cents.
Okay, so we'll do this formally. Trey's, or Thomas' motion and Docket's supported. Any discussion?
Where, where, oops.
I'm sorry, Tim, I have something to...
Where is the money going to come? Where, where are we going to get to 5,300? From the sewer department?
From the sewer department.
Oh, okay. That's all, they got lots of money. That's all I wanted.
That's, that's, we won't go there. The last, when this happened before, when we settled with a homeowner, when they paid the difference of the insurance, or when we paid the difference of the insurance, our attorney had us take a, a paper to them, an agreement that they wouldn't come back later and ask for more money or...
We need, we need to have that.
Tim, that's an excellent point, one I really should have thought of myself. Yeah, we need, we need at least a simple, two paragraph, one page release of all claims and, and a, a non-admission of any liability on the township's behalf.
I, my, my opinion stands.
Because according to the law, we're not liable because we are immune.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Included in the motion now? I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
And then whoever does cut that, who takes care of the checks and writing those letters? You know, that, make sure that gets signed when it happens, if it does?
Yes, ma'am.
When, when she picks up the check?
Yes. So, are you, are we asking you with the... It will be taken care of.
Beautiful.
All right. Okay, so any further discussion?
On that, no.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. I hope you, that's good. Thank you. Sorry for all your trouble. Wayne, you have something to say?
Ah, yeah, the, I would like to thank the plant and department for rerouting, rerouting the gutter from in between the building to run out into the parking lot at 75 Barker. So, thank you for that repair. I would like to say congratulations to Mr. John Light and Brian McDonald for what they've gone through. Last thing on the page, plug sewer call on Mart Street. Where is Mart Street at? I've never heard of Mart Street.
Mart? It is over in Green Oak Town.
M-A-R-T.
M-E-R-T, it's over in Green Oak Town.
Oh, that's why, okay. Wondering about that, but, okay, thank you. That's, that's all I got. I just was curious about that.
All right. Let's move on to our next report. Jennifer from the Senior Center.
Thank you. I just have one item that I wanted to talk about that was not in my report. I had received a phone call from a resident inquiring about renting the Senior Center for a private party. And that was a topic that was brought up shortly after I was hired. So, what I would like to do is compile a list of suggested fees and a rental contract proposal or draft and bring that to the next work session for the board to review and discuss.
Wayne, you have a question?
Are you going to work with Howard on that or trying to figure out what the, I mean, you're going to get some help on figuring out the fees or...
Yes, well, I'm going to make some phone calls in the local area and kind of get a cost analysis. And then I'll work with Howard on the...
Our, our fees might be different than somebody else's, so...
Sure, sure, but I need to start somewhere and just, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We spoke about this today and, and, yeah, I think, I think we can put something together that'll work for everybody.
Howard, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
We spoke about this today and I think we can put something together that'll work for everybody.
All right.
And then I wanted to remind the public that we are having our second free family outdoor movie night this Friday. It is going to be Monsters, Inc. It is starting around 8:00 PM, a little bit after dusk. And we will have free popcorn available again, so we hope that you join us. So, that is Friday, the 16th at the Library Lawn. So, hope that you can attend. Other than that, unless you have any questions, that's, that's all I have for tonight.
Great. Yeah, Jackie? Jennifer, I just want to tell you that I've heard from residents that they really liked the family movie night.
Yeah, we had a good time, so I'm glad that you did get some response.
Free popcorn.
Are you coming with? All right, any other questions for Jennifer? Great, thank you for your report. Okay. Let's see. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, let's do Howard's manager report.
For the majority of the report, I'll open it up for questions. The only thing I'd like to talk a little bit more in detail about, because I know it's on everybody's mind, is the non-motorized path. In terms of most recent updates that I have from even the day of writing this report until today is that we have confirmed...
Recent update on what, Howard?
Recent updates that are not indicated in, not in detail in the report, that we have confirmed that we do need a permit for construction in the railroad right-of-way. And so, that will be a separate permit that was not identified prior. I have received that permit and I will be signing that permit as well on the township's behalf. And so, if you wish, you can certainly make a motion to allow me to sign that permit. Secondly, we will be requesting that the permit fees be waived. I can't guarantee that that occur, but we will be requesting that as well. There doesn't need to be a motion on that basis. It's, it's just frankly us requesting that the fees be waived.
Fees be waived on what?
The fees be waived for the railroad permit related...
In the state of Michigan?
Huh?
State of Michigan.
It's actually, it's actually through the railroad. They have their own permitting process through the railroad and I believe it's a $400 or $500 fee. I will request a petition that that be waived. And if not, we're going to go ahead and administratively pay that fee because it has to occur in order for us to get the path up and running, if you will.
Howard, I hate to butt in, but the railroad's owned by the state of Michigan. They lease it to this railroad company, which I don't think has anything to say. I'm just, I'm just giving you my opinion. It's, it's owned by the state of Michigan. So, just check on that, will you please? Because I don't see how they could permit it when they don't own it.
They have their own, my sense is that they have their own internal process through MDOT. It's both through MDOT and through the railroad company.
Well, MDOT's from underneath the bridge.
Yes, sir. But, but I can read you the letter that's been written by Boss Engineering. And it says, "Dear Mr. Robinson, please accept this letter as a request for waiver of the $400 application fee for work within the MDOT railroad right-of-way. We appreciate your assistance with the permitting processing, and if you have any questions, please contact me. This is directed to the MDOT Office of Rail, Mr. Mark Robinson."
I believe nothing from Boss Engineering.
I am, I do not have a, I am not happy with the progress to date. I can tell you that I still believe that we will build, we will be building this path this year. I believe that it's going to probably happen towards the end of September into October at this point. And I am doing everything that I can to push this process as fast as I possibly can.
I, I believe, I believe you, you're doing a fabulous job, but these people should have had this done a year ago.
I agree with you and...
So, that's why I don't, that's why I don't trust Boss.
Yep, and, and there have been a number of points throughout this process that I have been unhappy with in terms of information that we've received after the fact. Information that needed to be done, documents that needed to be filled out, design work that needed to be completed. And then all of a sudden, we find that it's not adequate. And I can't say anything other than we're not happy with the progress. We do have a item on the agenda for tonight for a resolution to allow me to sign on the, on the actual, the normal permit, the full permit for MDOT as well. So, we really have two documents here. If, if, with that, I'll... Sure, that'll be fine.
Is one for under the bridge and one is for the railroad?
The, the MDOT, the MDOT permit relates to the whole construction of the path. I don't know that it's just under the bridge.
Okay, all right, sorry.
That's okay. I do have a few items that I wanted to talk about in terms of, that were not included, actually, one item in particular that was not included in the, my manager report, and that's related to codification. When we actually take the documents that we need to have codified, we have a stack of documents from the floor that's probably that high. We have two choices. One, we can ship all those documents off to the company and then they'll ship it back to us when they complete the process. And the process will take a number, the whole process is going to take over six months. They'll probably have those documents scanned, let's say, in a month's time. I would, I do, I am not comfortable allowing our original documents to leave the offices in that kind of quantities. What I'd like to do, and the reason I'm, I'm asking and bringing this up is because I would like to hire somebody on a temporary basis for a few days in the office to just scan all these documents. One of the suggestions that was presented is Bill's daughter might be a possibility. And I just wanted to throw out, given that it is obviously Bill's daughter, she would be working for us, myself, for the township administration employees, not for Bill. I don't believe we'd have any issues in terms of nepotism. It's only for a few days and it'll only be a few hundred dollars in terms of expenditure.
It's only how much?
A few hundred dollars, I'd say maximum of $300.
Who gets the check, Bill or his daughter?
His daughter.
Eventually, I will.
And, and if we have any leftover time, we might have her do a little bit of work on the website in terms of getting that stuff up and running as well with all the migration issues that we have. So, if the board so chooses, that would be helpful as a, as a motion to give me a dollar amount to play with on the, both mostly the codification of scanning documents and a little bit of work on the website when we get there. Other than that, I'll turn it over to the board if you have any questions.
Wayne?
Aye. I don't know. I guess on the front page, about halfway down, Township Administration Staffing.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think you're a big spender, sir. But I, I wonder, you said you, you are, you're going to need an assistant.
Mm-hmm.
Will this be after we are cutting the staff of $400 a week before this is going to take place?
My plan is to advertise for the assistant after this meeting and hopefully, although I don't know that we will have enough time...
Don't know if we'll have enough?
I don't know if we will have enough time for an overlap, but if it's possible, it would be nice to have some overlap. But realistically speaking, I don't think I can get and advertise for an assistant, review resumes... review resumes, perform interviews, and have that person starting in less than a month. My guess, Wayne, is that that person will happen sometime in September or October as a start date. If the board doesn't have any objections, I will move as fast as I possibly can to have an assistant in, because I will tell you that the staff, it is, the administration is understaffed, and the amount of work that is going through those offices is significant. I've never, and, and as Tim has indicated, I am very lucky to have an incredibly hard-working staff. And while we certainly can improve in some areas and get more efficient, the reality is that the, the individuals in that office work their tails off to get everything done. And I literally see people running, or, or fast-walking back and forth in order to get to the phone, get to the counter in time, and, and get everything that needs to be done, done for the administration of, of the offices. I have put in my report, and I do want to emphasize, that I think at some point, the board might want to consider staffing related to the zoning department and the code enforcement, and generally, the planning areas of the township. I see that as an individual that can be all-encompassing, but that would be a significant board decision. I'm not saying it needs to happen immediately, but something to think about moving forward in terms of sort of a true staffing plan for the offices. I think my assistant and increasing the deputy clerk for when the transition occurs with Shelley is really just the first step. I don't think that that solves the problem, and I, I think that the, the offices is still going to be understaffed. My assistant, just so everybody knows, will not just be my assistant. My assistant will be helping with payroll, will be helping with sewer billing, will be an office person that assists various departments in, in all kinds of areas. Sorry, Wayne.
Well, I know, just give me a short answer, please. And I know, I'm not being snotty.
That's okay.
I can see, I mean, I think you're a big spender. I think you want to just keep hiring and hiring. You want to spend a lot of money, Howard. But my question is, we have someone in the office who are paying an extra $400 a week right now.
Right.
Now, now, all I'm asking you is, are you, are you going to wait until this person is not getting $400 a week? Which will, I know you don't care, you don't, but, you know, but how about not, you not getting the assistant until we get this $400 out of the way? That will give us $1,600 a month to forge loan somewhere else. So that's all I'm asking? Is it going to be before or after?
I think that I would, that would, I would be fine with it being after.
Okay. That's, that's, that was my question. Thank you, sir.
Actually, right behind you, Bill, is the glare coming off of the-
Oh, that's it.
Oh.
Stay, stay there and hold it, Bill.
I don't know if anyone else can feel that.
Howard, you're just trying to wear me down there.
Ah, thank you.
And it's not necessarily the window, it's the glossies behind you on the wall that are picking up the glare. Thank you. Janet, you have a question?
Yep. Howard, so even if you started advertising now, which is probably the smart thing to do, because it'll take at least a month to bring this person in, by the time you hire that person, that extra $400 a week most likely will not be here?
Correct.
Okay. Is this a part-time or full-time position?
It will be a part-time position, and the budget is allocated for, I believe, up to $35,000. My intention is to keep this as a part-time position, probably in the neighborhood of 25 to 30 hours a week. We will not be going over 32 hours a week, I believe, because that's when our internal policy kicks in benefits. So I have, we have the flexibility within the budget to, to get to that higher-end number in terms of per hours, and I think that it's going to be needed.
The money is in your budget?
The, the money was budgeted for, if I'm not mistaken, $35,000.
Okay. Do we want them, do we want to do anything about the part-time, about Bill's daughter? I mean, do we need to?
Yeah, do we need a motion for Bill, for the scanning?
Yes, please. And just, why don't you, and may I suggest $350 as a maximum to be, to be used? $400? $300?
Okay, $500 is good.
Well, yeah. How big of a motion is that for temporary help for scanning, and I guess it was website information cleanup, not to exceed $500?
How much?
$500.
He only asked for $350. Why would you, why would you do $150 more than he asked for?
Just in case-
Just in case it goes over.
We, we will work to spend $350.
I mean, I like Howard, but we don't have to give him a tip.
Do we have a good scanner?
Huh?
Do we have a good scanner?
Yeah, I mean, that's the other problem.
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we split it in the middle and say $400?
Okay, $400.
Do we even know it?
Now we're only $50.
Okay. All right, so I'll support that. So we have auto-motioned and Instrom supported. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Do we need anything else from your report for a motion? I don't think so, do we, Howard?
No, ma'am.
Okay, great.
I just have one question, real quick. On the last page where you talked about communications for the public, with residents and everything?
Mm-hmm.
Are we putting in secured communications?
These are going to be, the, the website that we have comes with its own level of security.
Okay.
We don't do any hosting, it's hosted off-site. And so the security is going to be existing off-site. We're not going to be asking for information of a sensitive nature.
Yeah, I would just worry about somebody sending their social security number or, or anything like that. Okay.
Yep, no, this is, this is, that comment was related to if Tim wants to engage in terms of if there's any questions, you can ask a question of the sewer treatment facility or send in a, a question to the administration, sign up for a newsletter, those type of things.
Where does, where does it say communications on here, on his report?
It was, uh-
Huh?
In the middle of the last paragraph. They were talking about emailing, and I guess one of my concerns would be if somebody would want to email a copy.
I was looking at the, at the paragraph.
Yeah, I think one of my concerns is if somebody wanted to email a copy of their check, you wouldn't want to do that.
We're, we're going to discuss the sewer later on, is that right?
The sewer use ordinance will be discussed later on. This is just simply a way to engage residents in various issues.
I have no more questions.
All right. Well, thank you, Howard, for a nice report. We'll move on to the ZBA report. Jackie, you have any?
Yeah, we, we met on July 15th. The topics that we had were member training. Some of them felt that we needed to have internal training. We do have some costs allocated for internal training. But the one thought that, that the board discussed is expanding it out to other commissions and to the township board. It's probably having a zoning training that's open to all boards that would be involved. So I did talk with Howard a little bit about different people that we could bring in to do that type of training. We just haven't gone any further with it. The other one was a nomination of chair and board positions. They did nominate me as chair, but I told them that I really thought that there would be a conflict of interest in that, and according to the state statutes, I cannot.
No, you don't need it.
Yeah. So what they did do is put an addendum to that, that if I could not be, then Tim Anderson would be. So he is now the chair of the ZBA. We did discuss also the open vacancy position. It is Ken Dignan's position that is now open on the board. And we did talk about several different people that could do this. I think we have two people that have already put in as submission, but I think, did you want to speak to it?
I don't, just that we're looking for any applications or interest, you know, and anyone wanting to serve on the ZBA. And if there is anyone out there, please contact us or submit a letter to myself or Howard or Jackie for consideration.
Yeah, I would just say, if I may make a suggestion, I would put a timeline on the smittles and a deadline. If you would like them to be at the workshop, then the deadline would be pretty short, it'd be about a week and a half. If you'd like them to be available for the next board meeting, then you, you've got about three weeks. And so I would just set that deadline today. We'll go ahead and do our best to advertise that announcement and see if we can get the word out. And then if everybody can, if we can just ask the public to send in those letters to the township, you're welcome to CC Jackie or Marilyn on that, but if you can send them to me or get them physically into the township, then we will put all of those letters into everybody's packets for the board to review.
I think three weeks is a good timeframe.
Yeah, I think so.
Does anybody have a calendar on them? If you could just check to see what the Wednesday is.
Doesn't everyone make the, don't you make the-
The appointment?
Well, or bring up the names or-
Yeah, that's a-
It's up to you, it's not up to anyone else, is it?
Well, there are some questions around the ZBA, but Howard, do you want to clarify that for everyone, that it's still the supervisor that brings the, the name forward, and it's obviously still, well, Howard?
Yes. So one of the things that I'm going to do for the board, and I will try to get this done in the next week, is a list of all the various appointments, Plan Commission, BZA, Parks and Rec, all the various committees, and how those are appointed, if those are appointed by the supervisor, or if those are appointed by the board. My reading of the statute is that the board is the approval of the BZA.
ZBA.
ZBA. So in my reading of it, Wayne, the board votes for the ZBA members.
Correct. Even though, we got a new Plan Commission, I bring the name forward, it still has to pass.
Or the new names, or whatever, however it works. Okay, I just wanted to make that clear, that, that you're the one who brings that forward, as far as I know. And I'm, I'm asking if that isn't right.
Well, according to the state statute, any one of the board members can bring an appointment for the ZBA, for appointment. It's not necessarily Marilyn that does it.
Okay, well, it always has been, that's why I'm asking, so I didn't know.
Right, and that's what we need to clarify, is that-
Right.
You know, what name comes first and from who.
So, so that's going to be clarified. I'm going to do a full reading of the statute for all of the positions and all of the committees, and that will be distributed to the board.
Great, thank you, Howard.
Uh, sorry, Jackie, the, the date is September the 4th.
Okay.
For deadlines.
So we will have a deadline as of September the 4th. And then we, the last thing was Planning Commission Representative Larry Roman, who is still an active member on the Planning Commission and on the ZBA, so he is continuing as the Planning Commission Representative, at least until 2015, when his term ends. That's all we had on the ZBA. We did ask for a new zoning manual. Howard and I kind of discussed it about having to scan that document, because it's rather large.
Well, the last I heard, you guys were not correct, you weren't, correct me if I'm wrong, you were undecided whether Ken Dignan was going to get off, and that he could stay on, and then Ken was here, because he was moving to the, from the ZBA to the, to the Planning Commission, and he said that he did not want to stay on, even if he could, he wanted to give someone else a chance, is, is that the way you-
Yeah, but Larry has always, I guess Larry has been identified from the Planning Commission as a representative on the ZBA, he continues to be that.
Yeah, no, but I was just saying that, but, but at the la, the meeting before-
Yeah.
-when Ken Dignan was going to go on the Planning Commission, he, somebody didn't, they didn't realize if he was going to get off or not. Or, did he have to get off? And he said, "I don't want to be on the ZBA."
Yeah, I think he does put in his resignation.
Okay, is he, is he-
And I don't know if he has-
That was my question, if he put it in, so, so you don't know.
Maybe he did that last week, there was a meeting, wasn't there last week, a meeting?
Maybe, maybe we should-
Send a letter, man.
Before we start getting more people coming on.
I could say, talk to him, he had thought that something was going on last week, and then he was doing it then, so I-
We need him to resign.
We are having the next, um, ZBA meeting next Monday, so it-
We need him to resign.
Yeah. He has to turn in a letter of resignation.
Right.
Right.
He's aware of that.
He still has to. He still has.
That's what I'm trying to say. We're undecided, and we got to get, he needs to get off, and we're going to get other people to go on.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Jackie, do you have anything else?
That was that.
Great, thank you.
I have one thing, a question. When we bring the September 4th meeting, are we going to get to talk to or see or meet the people that are applying for the ZBA positions?
So one of the things that needs to be clarified is that, Wayne brought this up, part of the statute indicates that the supervisor appoints various members to the boards, all right? There's, I believe there's specific, that's right, I believe there are specific individuals in boards where the supervisor appoints. I believe that historically, the supervisor has been seen as a sort of administrative head of the township, and so they have brought those forward, okay? What I'm going to do is I'm going to clarify all of the positions and how that works in terms of if it's the supervisor's appointment, or if it's ultimately a, a board appointment, if you will. My reading, at least initially, of the statute is that the ZBA position is a board appointment. So at that, at that point, I would gather the resumes, gather all of the information, and present that to the board, and then ultimately, that is a board discussion for you to discuss as to who you want to see on the ZBA. Marilyn would then lead that discussion and ask for various motions as to who to present forward and who to not present forward, but that would be ultimately a board discussion. My intention, I apologize for being long-winded, my intention is to have all the letters in the packet for the board to review prior to the September 4th meeting.
Well, if she appoints somebody and they don't get a call, if she appoints somebody and they don't get a call, they don't get on anyway, they go to somebody else, isn't that right?
My reading of the ZBA statute is that the ZBA members are a board appointment, and so my reading of that would be that the board would discuss collectively who they want to be on the ZBA.
But who is bringing the name forward that gets voted first?
I would think that would be the supervisor.
I think.
Okay.
Right, I mean, we have 10, well, who picks the first name to come for the vote, you know? If the first one passes, okay, then we move on. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I offer a suggestion?
Absolutely.
Could we amend the agenda and pick this up again later in the meeting? We've got, we've got folks here who are going to do presentations, or, I'd like, I'd like to move them, their, their agenda items forward, and, and let's pick this up again. I'm just sensitive to the fact that we have people in the audience that are waiting on their, their matter to be.
Uh, yeah, we're, we're still in there, Department had reports, but yes, we will move on. Howard, thank you for investigating that, and can you get back with us?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, so Janet, we'll go down to your report.
Yep, mine is short. Planning Commission met August 7th, site plan approval was granted to Regal Recycling with several conditions. The end.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Janet? Okay, Tracy, Parks and Rec.
Nothing of any real substance to report. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you very much. Okay, Kathy, we have you on the financial report here, but we also have you on the agenda, do you want to-
Right, that is the financial report-
Thank you.
For this meeting.
Okay, I figured.
Number one and two on the agenda.
All right, and let's see, who do we have in the audience that is waiting on as well? Let's see, one is, let's leave number one where it is. Let's see, one is, let's leave number one where it is. One and two, and then we'll see where we can move anyone up. All right. Kathy? Let's get started. Number one, the Investment Policy Advisor. You want to?
Brian, who we've all met before.
Did you, are you changing things or?
No, he's here in the audience and he's number one on the agenda, so I'm just going to keep that where it is.
I just heard him say he wanted to bring somebody.
As long as you never know who to thank when you're, is it a good thing or a bad thing to be number one on the agenda? So we have, there's a couple pieces in your agenda, right? This is a continuation of the conversation we're having at the workshop just about the investable funds you have, working with Kathy and working with Howard to try to establish things. In your packet is an investment policy statement and a resolution that Paul's firm drafted. We agree with everything that's in, just a couple tweaks from our standpoint, because part of what we do in working with clients is, is write and revise our investment policy statements. And the whole idea for us, right, so if we take a step back from an investment standpoint is a couple recommendations. Number one, engage someone to sell the securities, whoever that may be. We'd be honored if we were chosen. Believe it or not, from the news you had even a couple of weeks ago, you've seen a slight improvement in things. You know, you're talking percentages, you're not talking broad sweeping amounts. From our standpoint, you know, as we kind of look at things from an overall market standpoint, I think the news down the road only gets worse. And Mr. Dockett, this kind of goes to your comments of, you know, what happens five years from now. It's our belief and my practice from doing this for the last 13 years, that if you sell the securities today, I promise you, you can sell them for more tomorrow.
You promise what?
Murphy's Law of Investing. Whatever you sell today is higher tomorrow, whatever you buy today is lower tomorrow, right? But in our view, where you sit, to the extent that you discover you need the funds five years from now, and I think there's a greater probability that you need these funds for some unforeseen project in the next 10 years than there is a probability that you don't need the funds until they mature in 2025 or 2030. So to the extent that you find yourself five years from now having a need for any portion of these funds for some unforeseen project, I think the news five years from now is a lot worse. And if the news five years from now isn't worse than it is today, then I think the least of your concerns is going to be whether or not you can sell the securities, right? If interest rates are lower than where they are today, five years from now, we're in a very, very difficult spot, right? That means that the quote unquote great recession of 2008 has come back in Reader's Ugly Head again, and things have gotten worse. So that's where in our communications with Howard and with Kathy, our recommendation is that you engage someone to liquidate those securities. And then what you do with those from that point forward is really a function of what the board's most comfortable with. That's where your investment policy statement comes in. And how we work with different townships, cities, counties, every combination of governmental agency imaginable, as, you know, different cooperative agreements have come forth, is the township board, in this case, delegates authority to an investment officer, traditionally the treasurer or the finance director, and that investment officer is granted authority and a scope of what they can and cannot do in the investment policy statement. So that means that all parties involved, whether they're making investment decisions or whether it's a person, a member of the public that wants to get a handle on what you're doing from an investment standpoint of surplus funds, it's, here's a copy of our investment policy statement. Here's what you're allowed to invest in, here's the maximum maturity that you can go to. And there's some of that language that's in the investment policy that's part of your packet that references, for example, governmental securities maximum 24 months. So you can't find yourself, provided the investment policy statement is followed, three years from now, you can't find yourself in the same situation. Now, there's a few tweaks that we, just adjustments we wanted to make. We'd want to add CDs to this, right? Bank CDs to the extent that they're attractive, but would work with Kathy and work with Howard to draft an investment policy statement, just some slight modifications to what Paul's firm has already provided, that this board can approve, that then delegates that authority to an investment officer, that Kathy can then work with whoever she chooses. And what you have here, it'd be individuals from PNC, JP Morgan, or Morgan Stanley. If someone else they wanted to engage, you'd have to amend the investment policy statement, right? So you understand who they're working with. So if I, I may just jump in. So we have two, and I only do this because we've, we've had a lot of conversations about this, and I think we all have a real good grasp of what is in front of us. We have two decisions in front of us. One is the engagement with Brian's firm, which is Morgan Stanley, and the division of Morgan Stanley is Greystone Consulting. So that is number one on the agenda, and that is number one, and I would ask that we sort of take these individually so that we not get out of turn in the conversation. So the first is the engagement with the Investment Policy Advisor. There are, Brian has indicated previously that there are essentially three ways to engage. He has provided a follow-up email, which is in your packets, which indicates two suggestions that he is providing. The one way to engage would be a fiduciary obligation that would cost us $30,000. That legally would get us advice, but that advice would be legally meaningful. I will defer to those who are more knowledgeable in the law as to what exactly that really means in terms of can we go after a company at the back end for liability. Second way to engage would be a sort of mid proposition, mid-level proposition, in which we indicate $10,000 or provide $10,000 upfront. Brian offers us advice, does not provide a legally contractual obligation of fiduciary responsibility, but remains silent on the issue. And then the third way to engage would be a straight brokerage relationship in which Brian engages essentially for free, recognizing that nothing in life is for free, but Brian has, would have fees that he would tack on to any sales of any bonds or products that we own, and he would be forthcoming with those fees and what the costs are for selling those products. I think that is the first decision that we need to tackle today.
You're kind of jumping around a little bit, aren't you? I don't, I don't see on this paper what you're talking about on, I see a one and a two here, but.
Wayne, at the, at the workshop.
I know, but it's not, it's just, she just pointed out, it's not numbered correctly.
Okay.
Kathy, do you have a motion prepared or anything?
Well, I'd like, I mean, Howard, do you want to finish up?
The, the board needs to kind of determine, it's a business decision as to how you want to engage. I guess my recommendation and would be to engage at the level of a brokerage relationship at this point. I don't believe that we have the ability to spend $30,000 for fiduciary responsibility, and legally, I don't think that if we engage at the $10,000 level, that that's really going to matter in terms of a sort of legal position that we have, that there's a fiduciary legal obligation. My personal recommendation would be to engage at the brokerage level. Now, that might be different than the recommendation of our attorney. He was really pushing for fiduciary responsibility. I will tell you that I don't think the fiduciary responsibility, while I'd like to have it and like to see it, I don't think we can afford it, and I think that we need to sort of move forward, sell these investments in a prudent way, and I do have faith in Brian that he's going to give us the same advice as if we gave him $30,000 or if we engaged with him as a broker. I think that, so my recommendation would be to engage in a brokerage relationship.
Are you talking about the $7,800?
No, I'm talking about a no, a no-fee engagement. The fees would come when he sells the securities.
It's number one.
There's no price on it. We have no price to go by.
We have no price. I will say that is.
That's all I'm trying to figure out, there's three different, I think that things are misnumbered. I'm just trying to figure out which one we're talking about here.
So the commissions are.
Is that, I would recommend the best course of action to invest in the proceeding of the sale of the bonds. Is that the one we're talking about?
The one we're speaking of is.
Which one are you talking about?
Number one.
Number one.
No, you just said that, you just said number one was up here. This is the one you're talking about now. Okay, well, well, last time you said number one was up here. I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the one you like, number one. But there's no price. There's a percentage, is that right?
No, under, under number one, being engaged as a broker, you're only, I'm only compensated if a security's sold.
You're only compensated?
We're compensated a portion of the proceeds of the sale.
Are you talking about the first sale where we're going to sell our, okay, you're going to get something out of the?
Correct.
$2,600,000.
Correct.
Well, what percentage is it? I mean, is there, do you have a figure? I mean, if you get a percentage, you must know.
Somewhere between, so in, in any of the studies that we have, it, to be honest, it really depends on what the buyer of the security is willing to pay.
What's this?
It depends on what the buyer of the security, right? So think about it like a real estate transaction.
Well, I'm thinking about it with somebody that don't have too much brains on this thing.
Okay.
If we're talking about selling $2,600,000, I just want to know what.
The maximum fee we can charge is half a percent on the sale of a security. On $2.6 million would be roughly.
Five oh of 2,600, is that?
12,000.
Around 12,000.
Yep. Is that half, roughly, so half percent? That's 13, sorry, excuse me, 13,000. Half a percent on $2.6 million would be $13,000.
Okay, so we're talking, it's going to cost us 13,000 on top of that. And that's, and that's, then you're out, is that right? From then on, we, we put the money in CDs or whatever?
You have, yeah, to the extent that you sell those bonds, there's, there's no contractual obligation that you have to stay with us, you know? The money is yours. It's, it's an at-will contract. You can.
Well, I like this, it says, it says, I guess we can get out in three or six months or we can.
Wayne, there, there's no contract, as the gentleman said, it's an at-will contract. If we engage Brian, we're engaging Brian in a brokerage relationship. We can turn around tomorrow if we don't like Brian, if Kathy doesn't like Brian, Kathy can turn around tomorrow and come to the board and ask for another broker to be engaged. Brian will.
Ask for what?
Another broker to be engaged.
Why do we have to have a broker?
Because.
Once we get the money out of the, once we get the money out of the sales, why can't we just put it in the bank?
Because it's not about putting the money in the bank, it's about selling the product. The current broker that we have got us, was part of the reason why we're in this mess in the first place, and we need, we have to, we have to have a broker to sell the bond.
Okay, we're talking about that. We're going to sell it for 12, for 13, it's going to cost us $13,000? He's going to get us out of it, is that correct? Out of the deal we're in?
Yes.
Okay, then, then, then what are, what are we going to do with the money?
Well, I think that's the next decision. I just, I'm trying to get us through one decision.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what we're going to do after we, after we make the decision of getting the money out.
Okay. My recommendation would be, I would say if we had a motion on the floor, sorry, Marilyn.
I'll make the motion to transfer the investment portfolio from MultiBank to engage Morgan Stanley Greystone as our broker. And, I mean, do I say option one here on this number?
Did you say that again? You're not speaking into the microphone, you're speaking sideways from it, so it's only out to me directly, so.
I make a motion that we transfer the investment policy from MultiBank to Morgan Stanley Greystone as broker.
Support.
Do you want to add the, what the cost is?
Should I just do that one first?
Okay, yeah, let's just simplify it, all right?
Well, are you going to add what the cost is? Point 05?
Well, we can't add the cost because it's on a commission basis. It's going to be on a commission basis. We don't know what the commissions are until the products are actually sold.
He said it was 0.5.
Said that was the maximum.
That's maximum.
It could be less than that, is what I'm hearing.
Right.
Not to exceed.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table that Brian has motioned and Chick has supported. Is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now on to decision number two.
Madam Treasurer, if I may. So number two is the Investment Policy Resolution. The Investment Policy Resolution in front of you is, is mostly taken from state code. It is mostly a continuation of what we've had. As you've heard today, Brian wants to make some tweaks to that policy. My recommendation is that you do adopt this policy tonight so that we have this policy at least in place. If I recall correctly, we wrote it so that the maximum yield curve is two years on, on any bonds purchased. That's a pretty conservative number. I think that once this resolution is adopted, Brian and Kathy will get together and myself, and we'll see what tweaks we need to make, what further, further, if you will, bracketing of authority we need to create, and we'll bring it back to you, but at least initially, I think that we should move forward with adopting this resolution tonight.
Tracy?
Yeah, Mr. Green, you're advocating adding like a subsection J, certificates of deposit.
Right. If you actually read Public Act 20, which, recall, Public Act 20 is a state law that says what you can and cannot do. Certificates of deposit, as long as they're insured by the FDIC, are permissible investment. And we'd argue, you know, that's.
Very safe.
About as safe as you can get.
Okay. Are there any other changes to this policy?
Uh, no. It's just minor tweaks from our standpoint, just spells out roles and responsibilities for individuals, but that's something that can be added later. The other thing that's important to keep in mind from a policy standpoint is, it's our belief that a policy is a living, breathing document. Something could change six months down the road, this can be changed.
Right. Okay, I would make a motion to, for the Northfield Township Board of Trustees to adopt the resolution in front of us, a resolution of the Northfield Township Board of Trustees establishing a policy on township investment and depository designations with one change. We would add subsection J, certificates of deposit in the listed items that would be permissible for the Board of Trustees to authorize the treasurer to invest in.
I support. This is a resolution, does this require a will call vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thomas?
Yes.
Can we have a little discussion?
Discussion?
I would like to say that we're losing $400,000 on this deal, of the taxpayers' money of Northfield Township. Everybody in Township that pays taxes, we're, we're losing $400,000 on this deal. I think it's the best deal we're going to get, but I don't think we need another broker to show us how to lose money. So I'm against putting our money back in with another broker. We end up losing Northfield Township money possibly. Thank you.
Any other one with discussion? Okay. So we're on a resolution vote and.
I do have a question.
Okay.
I apologize. So if any amendments or changes are made to the resolution going forward, do they require additional motions or amendments?
Yeah.
Approval, okay.
It would be my belief that to the extent that we want to make any changes to the investment policy statement, that this board would have to approve those changes.
Okay, so we're on our will call vote and let's start over, Thomas?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Engstrom, yes. Dockett?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. All right. So that has taken care of number one and number two on our agenda. We do have Tetra, let me see, for the Sewer Assessment District, would we like to move that one, 10, to turn into 2A? And is there anyone else in the audience that is waiting on an agenda item? Okay, so I think 10A is, let's move 10 and turn that into 2A, all right? So that's the Sewer Assessment District. Paul Lawrence has suggested we move forward. Paul Burns has suggested we move forward. And all we really have to do tonight is... Well, one of the things we need to do tonight is to set the date for the public hearing. And also, we need to make motions to engage, you know, A, B, and C, which is Miller Canfield, Bezinski, and Tetra Tech on the sewer assessment district.
So, we're moving to number eleven.
We're moving ten up right now to two A. So, not everyone has to stay here all night. Okay. So, Jackie, did you have something?
I... Did you want me to make a question?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. If you're ready, yeah.
All right. So, I make the motion for the engagement for Miller Canfield as bond counsel for the sewer assessment district for Northfield Township.
I'll support. So, Otto motioned. Inkstrom supported. Any discussion? Wayne?
The lady talked about the two or three hundred thousand dollars on the sewer that's on Horseshoe Lake. My only question is, how does the property owners find out how much this job costs totally? I mean, we got the same problem on Seven Mile Road. We never find out. I don't know if it's Miller Canfield that finds out. So, whoever it is, that's the only reason I'm asking. Who comes up with the end cost in the lot and lets the property owners know what it costs for the project?
Mr. Dacken? The answer to your question is, the gentleman in the audience, Brian Rubel, gives an estimate of costs on the construction and then factors in a general percentage of what bond counsel fees are, what their fees are, and what financial advisor fees are. Those numbers obviously are updated with respect to the documents that you have in front of you because you have a bottom line number for Miller Canfield, a bottom line number from Bezinski and Associates, and a bottom line number from Tetra Tech. The amount of the actual bond can only be determined when the project is bid. And so, right now, what we...
When what?
When the project is bid. So, right now, what we have is an estimate. That doesn't mean that it's going to be...
I know that, Howard, but we ended up with three hundred thousand dollars on one, and I think there's quite a bit on Seven Mile Road. It's not working. I'm just asking, how are we gonna find out at the end of the project? How much... How much... Right now, you're estimating what the people are gonna pay. That's what they're gonna pay regardless. And if there's a lot of money left there, I think the property owners deserve to know it. And I just wanna know who's in charge of that.
Uh, myself is in charge of that. What I would suggest, if that's a concern, is for there to be a motion, that a report be presented to the board following completion of the project, indicating ultimately what the full cost of the project was in relationship to how it was bid out and the cost itself. And then you would be able to have a better sense of whether or not those costs were significantly less than what was originally assessed. The problem, though, I will add, is while I can give you a report on what the construction is, what I can't tell you is whether or not people pay early, whether or not they pay late, and what those interest amounts are going to be over the next 20 years. That's where we have overages in other districts. But what I can do is I can... Brian and I both can report back to this board as to actual numbers of construction and compare those to numbers that were originally assessed.
Well, you know where I'm getting at. And this is not the place to ask, but I still wanna find out about Seven Mile Road.
Yes, sir.
And if you say that's your job?
Ultimately, that is my job and bond counsel's role. And... Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay.
We have a motion on the table.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Next one, I move to engage for Bezinski and Associates as financial advisors for the sewer assessment district for Northfield Township.
I'll second. Otto motioned. Inkstrom supported. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
And so, the third one, I move to, for the engagement for Tetra Tech as an engineering consultant for the sewer district... Sewer Assessment District for Northfield Township.
I'll support. Go ahead.
Support.
Okay. Otto motioned. Chick supported.
This is the one that Tetra Tech is in the audience. Is that correct?
Correct.
And he's the one that's gonna be responsible along with our supervisor, our Township manager. Is that correct? Thank you.
Correct. Any discussion? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Since we're on this...
You mean bringing eleven up to two?
Yeah. Yeah. To two B. You know, just to stay on the subject. So, okay. Eleven is becoming two B. Sorry, everyone. Just to stay in the same category here.
There is somebody in the audience that I think wanted to ask some questions about the sewer. I don't know if he can or not, but...
Okay.
Lester, did you wanna ask anything? Are you guys on... They're on the sewer. They're on the sewer. And I thought they would be able to speak for a minute or two.
Okay. That's fine. We're gonna be talking about the resolution to set the public hearing. But yes, please speak if you have any comments.
Is it live? My name is Dave Horton. I own Southeast Petroleum at U.S. 23 and North Territorial. I also own property on Whitmore Lake Road in the sewer assessment district. I guess, you know, and I saw all the numbers that came out at a meeting here.
You're talking to the microphone.
I'm sorry. I saw the numbers that came out, what, a month or so ago at the meeting? Just a few questions, you know, and I guess we don't have all the answers yet. But one of the questions that came up at that time was, what's gonna happen as far as taxes? Are they gonna uncap?
No.
That's for sure?
That is from the assessor.
Do we get that in writing?
He will not put it in writing.
That worries me.
Well, you got the minutes of this meeting.
All I can say is I've asked multiple occasions whether or not it's gonna get uncapped. You know what I will do? I will confirm with the attorney. Because the assessor indicated that, you know, putting something like that in writing can get easily misinterpreted. It will not remove the cap. But there is a possibility that when the sewer goes in, that it's gonna increase property values in that area. And people will look at that and say, my taxes went up, when in fact, it didn't remove the cap, but it increased property values generally in the area. And so, he's concerned about, you know, putting something like that on paper that ultimately might get misinterpreted. I will try to have the attorney put together something related to how the sewer assessment district and how installing the sewers will impact the cap. My... And I've asked him on multiple occasions. The answer that I have is it will not remove the cap. Okay.
It went on Seven Mile until it hooked up. And until it went by, we paid for the footage, but it didn't do anything until we bought the taps.
And my understanding is that there will be... That the cap will not be removed unless the properties are sold.
Okay. All right.
Unless it's sold, did you say?
Unless it's... So, will we get a clarification from the attorney?
That's... That I can ask for. Yes, sir. And the things that are happening tonight, just so you know, is not locking this board into the decision of the sewer assessment district. We're just setting the public hearing and engaging our consultants with contractual obligations. Right? So, we're not locked into putting a pipe in the ground. We're just moving forward so that we're not delaying this any further. But I will confirm with the attorney and see if we can't get you something in statutorian writing.
Okay. Just one final question. In the eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars that was shown, divided between all the parcels, that included all the interest over the life of the bond, correct?
No.
That did not?
No. The eight hundred... The eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars... Brian, if you wanna speak more specifically to the details of the cost, if you wanna come up?
I'll step aside. Thank you.
Yeah. The answer to his question was the eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars were the initial cost for the project. If a property owner chose to finance the project, pay for it over time, there would be an interest rate payment...
Right.
...associated with that.
And the documents that we presented at the community meeting and that have been presented, the sample, or if you will, average property in the district, did include interest rate payments over time. But the eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars is the initial cost of the project. It'd be... It's our cost to put the project in. And then we have bond payments on that. We'll then transfer those interest payments to the property owners.
Did you have any other questions?
Yeah. I believe if... And Brian, I don't know if you have that document in front of you. I don't have it in front of you. But I believe there were two columns. One column was the cost if you paid everything upfront. And then the second column included interest over time. So, you have... Brian, is this schedule... This schedule does not include interest right here, these totals.
It does not.
It does not include interest. But there was a schedule that was passed out, a sample, a sample cost assessment of an average parcel. And that did include... That did include interest. Am I correct?
I don't remember that document, Howard, but it may... The financial advisors may have produced it, and I did not retain a copy of it.
Yeah. I mean, it's right here. Principal December 1st, interest at 5%. Total revenue due December 1st. It's on the second page, if I'm not mistaken. Brian, if you want to take a look at that?
That's for the whole district?
Yeah.
Not on individual parcels? Is that correct?
Ah, thank you. Is there...
Any...
I guess we still have a follow-up.
We're gonna have more meetings.
But the parcel that came out to thirty-eight thousand dollars...
Uh-huh.
The debt included that 5%, which they anticipated affecting the regular payment.
No. No. That was if you paid it off all at once. There was... Go ahead.
The estimated annual payment to debt, that number included that interest?
I believe the estimated annual payment did include the interest. That is correct. And we can check that in the morning, if you'd like.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Yeah. And there's still gonna be plenty of question answers. You know, this is not final, you know, Howard indicated. So, what we need to do next is the resolution to set the public hearing regarding to move forward on the sewer.
Thank you for letting me talk.
Absolutely. Yep. It's a big decision. I'm sorry. I'm out of line because we're... Okay. I'll make a motion to... So, I have the special assessment resolution, number one, for the sewer district... Wait. I'm sorry. Hold on a second. Is this... No. We need to set the date.
Set the date.
Set the date.
Yeah.
Number 11.
Right. Howard, do you have a date that you already have in mind, or...
The public hearing should be set for the next board meeting, if I'm not mistaken, in September. September the...
Fourth? Did you... Tenth? September 10th. So, we have a resolution to set the public hearing for the sewer assessment district for September 10th. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Inkstrom motioned. Chick supported. Any discussion? Those in favor?
These people, they'll all have time to come and talk and ask questions.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. This is just the start.
Yep.
And Howard, since this is a resolution...
Yeah, I would, I would do a roll call.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead.
The date is in section four.
Is it? Okay. That's what I'm looking for.
Page four.
Section, section four. Okay, well.
There it is.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Thank you. All right. Since it's a resolution, we have a roll call vote. Thomas?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Inkstrom, yes. Dackett?
Yes.
Bud?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. Now let's go back up to three on the agenda. The Township Donations Fund and Line Item Resolution. Jackie, were you going to make a motion for that, or would you like me to?
Yeah, I could make the motion. I'd like to make the motion to incorporate a line item creation in the fund resolution. Should I say it that way?
It would just be, the motion would just-
For Township Donation Fund?
The motion would just, yes. The motion would just be to adopt the resolution.
Okay. All right. So I am going to make, make the motion to adopt the resolution in creating the Township Donation Fund line items.
Great. I'm sorry. Hold on for discussion. Okay, so I'll support that. So, Otto motioned, Inkstrom supported. Any discussion?
Where, is this money coming out of the township? Or what's, what's these places? $2,000 donation from the senior center. $300 to Kiwanis. $4,000 to the community events. What, where's this money coming from?
It's not, the money is, is, is what we anticipate to fundraise over the next year. If we don't-
But we're not giving them any money. If, if they collect the money, why is this thing, is it up to that much, or?
Well, yes, we're appropriate, we're, we're setting an appropriation of what we believe we will collect.
That, okay.
It's paper money.
Yeah. But it has nothing to do with us giving them any funds.
Not yet. Unless we collect it. Right? And so if Jennifer collects, if Jennifer collects $300 from the Kiwanis, yeah, we're not giving Kiwanis $300 bucks.
Okay. Well, the way it looks here, I didn't understand.
Janet?
But it's only money that somebody's going to give us. Not out of the work yard of funds.
Right, and then, you're welcome, sir.
Janet?
I see three categories here. Is there a category for projects in the township? Or if somebody wanted to donate for a township clock or something, they could do that?
Community events.
Well, it's not really an event, though. It's, um...
We can set, we can set another line. I was thinking that community events was a catch-all. But if we'd like, we could set a line for community projects.
I like projects.
Sure.
And events. Because it is two different things.
How about we make it events slash projects?
Yeah.
We can do both. We can, that would be fine. We can do events slash projects.
Don't be, don't be stingy, Howard.
Don't be, I won't.
Okay, but then if you were donating to a project, you could designate that that fund only went to that project, not to an event?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So this is a resolution? Is there any, well, any more discussion? I'm sorry. Okay. Tracy, Thomas?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Inkstrom, yes. Dackett?
Yes.
Bud? And, yes. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Are you going to excuse them? They were today. Okay. Okay.
A long time ago, that lady didn't have to. Okay, let me see. Where are we? We are on number four.
We are on number four.
The Sewer Use Ordinance?
Sewer Use Ordinance.
We need to vote on ordinance? And I'm assuming this is a roll call vote again?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Does anyone have any thoughts or discussion or anything before we get going on there?
Excuse me?
Any thoughts, discussion on the, the use ordinance? The sewer, the use ordinance?
There was something in here about MCL 691, 1416 through the other one. I never did see that. I don't, I don't really know what it's, what it's all about, to tell you the truth.
This is part of the workshop that?
Well, that was a long time ago. But, but I do-
No, Tim's still with us tonight. Did you?
But we do still, we still are going to have some responsibility to our sewer clients, or we are not, if I have any, according to this.
According to law, there's five things that have to have happened for us to be liable. So if it's something that we knew about and didn't take care of it, or if we didn't take care of it in a reasonable amount of time, then we are liable. Something that we should have known. Those are our responsibilities.
All right.
I, I believe that we force people to hook on the sewer and that we charge them every month. I believe we are responsible to, so I won't be able to support that.
All right. So we need a roll call for the ordinance?
Do we make a motion for the ordinance?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Sure, if you want.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, to adopt the ordinance of the Northville Township Board of Trustees establishing policy on sewer billing policy adjustments and sewer backups resulting in loss of property.
Do you want to add ordinance 13 to that, or? Or doesn't it make any difference?
They're not numbered.
Yeah, that's not the number. She has to add a number.
All right.
Support.
All right. So Otto motioned, chick supported. Any discussion? Let's record a roll call vote. Thomas?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Inkstrom, yes. Dackett?
No.
Bud?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. The sign issue at 75 Barker Road. Wayne, did you have something that you wanted to chat about that? Or did you?
Yes, I got a letter. I don't know if you guys got emails. I got a letter from Tina Lupai mailed to me. And she, she says that she's been waiting since December to get her sign up. She's, she's losing business. We tore her sign down, meaning the township did. When unbeknownst to her, we didn't notify her. And I think she is a tenant. She is paying her rent. She is in business. She's trying to make a living. I believe that, that we could give her the, as a board, we could give her the okay to put a couple cedar posts in and put the signs up. Or I know she's talked with Howard. Maybe, maybe Howard agreed to put signs, cedar posts in. I don't know. But I believe this board can make the decision. It was existing sign. We tore it down. I think we should be able to put it back up.
Wasn't someone, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jenna.
I agree with Mr. Dackett. I talked to Ms. Lupai as well. And we did take her sign down. And she has had nothing up there to show that her business is there. So we, I think we should be doing something for her. And help her get her sign into compliance with the zoning, too.
Yeah, and I think this might have been pre-Howard. I'm not sure. But we had talked about this. And I thought someone was going to check our ordinance, you know, to say, what can we put back there quickly for her? Did anyone ever get an answer on that? Okay. Are we okay with what?
No.
Okay.
I believe that we took her sign down. I don't believe she needs to talk to Kurt. I believe this board can make the decision that she can put two cedar posts in the ground, put her signs up. I, I don't, I don't see any reason for us to, to not. It's our property. I think we're responsible to our tenant. And I, I just, I don't know if anyone else spoke to her. But I think she's desperate to.
No, but I do feel we have to follow our own ordinances. So.
It would be in a place where it's visible. It's not like, it's not going to be hidden anywhere. It just has to be farther off from the road.
I'm just afraid if we just go ahead and, oh, let's just put some post and a sign on it, how, you know.
I disagree.
Right, good for her, good for, you know, but, you know, visibly, you know, appealing.
No.
Well, but she'd have to run from the-
Someone peel from the township.
She has to run from the planning commission. And all that, $6,800 that we'll have to pay. She has to go in front of the zoning. I mean, it's a long, drawn-out process. Okay. Well, then that's fine. We're-
It's only if she goes outside of that.
Only, only what?
Only if she goes outside the criteria of the ordinance does she have to go to the board.
Well, what's been the holdup, then? Why don't she?
The, the, the holdup is, if I may, the sign that it exists previously was outside of the criteria. And so if we put back the old sign, it's not in compliance. So here's what I would say. If the board wants to authorize me to give her permission to put up what the old sign represented, then it probably won't be in compliance. And I would need the board to vote to give me permission to go against our own rules. Otherwise, we're going to try to figure out, I believe the square footage is 36 square foot on the sign. If we get to, I believe, 40 square foot, we might be outside of our own ordinances. We'll try to see if, if she's okay with putting that up within the zoning ordinances.
When you talk about the old sign, Howard, you don't mean Northville offices? You don't mean that old sign?
I mean the size. I mean the size of the old sign. If we gave her the size back.
Well, it was a very large sign. It said, "Northville Township." I mean, the sign was four times larger than this now. Correct? When we had the old, well, the man on the other side of it knows what it was. It was a very large sign that said, "Northville, Northville Township."
That's correct. And I don't, I don't believe that would fit into the current-
No. All she's got is little signs like this. I mean, you know.
That's, that's, that's what she has kind of leaning against the flag.
Yeah, yeah. That's what we're talking about, her putting up there. And it's a lot, lot less than what was ever there before.
Well, I, I think, the way I see it is you have two problems. You have the square footage and you have the location of the sign that you have to try to make fit within the ordinance.
How does everyone feel about possibly giving Howard the okay to run with this, to help her out and, and make the decision on it?
Give Howard? I, uh, yeah, she's got the signs.
How about I bring back at the next?
I support your, I support your deal to let Howard.
Let Howard run?
Yeah.
Sure. Then the vote would be to give me permission to break the zoning code.
I support.
There's nothing else I can, I mean-
She's, she's spent around $1,700 on this sign.
How about?
She has the sign.
How about at the next board, how about at the next board meeting or at the next workshop? I try to have quotes for you and a placement and a size of a sign, and then we can move forward. I don't, I can't, I, I don't know where the sign's going to be and how big it's going to be. So I don't really know what the vote would be.
I would make a motion to have Howard take care of this. If I could get a second, then we can move on.
Well, do we need a motion, other than, you're just going to go ahead and go get some?
I'm going to, I'm going to give you guys a bunch of information for the next workshop, and we'll try to have this resolved by the next workshop.
Perfect. We don't need a motion.
But she waited all this time.
Yeah.
I think, I think we ought to settle it, one way or the other.
I'm going to try to settle it as soon as possible.
All right. Okay, moving on to our next item of business. Number six. We need to update our policy for the deaf and disability coverage. And Jackie, did you say you have a motion for that?
Yeah. I am going to make the motion to update the policy as we need it on the liability insurance contract.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Wayne?
I have a problem with this, this board voting to put ourselves up to $250,000 if we get hurt somehow.
You're talking because it says Board of Trustees, correct?
Because it says Board of Trustees. I don't think that we should be voting on our, our own insurance policy. It don't pass the smell test, in my opinion. That needs to be taken off in there.
Well, I think it's, yeah, I think we should take care of tonight, and then maybe we can address that, you know, taking the trustee.
No, maybe, no, maybe, no, maybe's. I'm, I'm not going to vote to give myself $250,000 worth of life insurance. If, if you're on the board and you want to vote for that, that's fine. But I'm not going to.
All right, we have a motion. Did we get a second on that? Oh, I second, okay, sorry. All right. So I second, any further discussion outside of Wayne's comments? Okay. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Number seven. The resolution on the non-motorized path.
So Madam, or Madam Supervisor?
Yep.
The only thing I would add to this is, just in case, just in case there's, and there's going to be an additional permit I'm going to need to sign for the MDOT railroad right-of-way. Just, just, after you pass this resolution, just give me authorization to sign any additional permits that are necessary for this project to, to see it to completion.
Absolutely.
What are we doing? Giving you authorization to sign any permits or anything like that?
Yes, sir.
I'm for that.
Okay. So we need to-
Get this thing rolling. We can get rid of that nasty engineer we got.
All right. Jackie, did you have?
No, if you want me to make the motion, I will.
Sure.
Make the motion to accept the resolution on the non-motorized pathway and to also authorize Howard Fink to sign permits going forward up to completion of the project.
I have a second?
Support.
Okay.
It's a present, a present project. I mean, it might go on for miles someday.
Present project.
Completion of the, of that project. So I think phase two, B.
Jackie's having fun with you. All right. So Jackie, motion. Thomas, supported. Those in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion?
No.
Okay. And those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Appointment for the SIMCOG committee on the non-motorized path. Groups that were, that was in your package here? Does any, would anyone like to nominate themselves?
Is this, I asked you if this is the one that has to do with the non-motorized path or the pathways or trails, that type of thing? Okay. So I will make the motion to, to have Tracy Thomas as our representative for the SIMCOG Regional Clearinghouse Review Committee.
I think that's a great idea, with him on the Parks and Rec. How do you feel about it, Tracy?
Fine with me. Absolutely.
It's a natural.
Yep.
Okay. I support.
Howard, Howard joined this SIMCOG. I, I don't know what it says in the bills here. It was $1,171 dues. I'm kind of a big spender to spend our, Howard, our money on dues for SIMCOG.
Okay. Well, we just move on. So for this nomination, do we need to do anything formal here? Or just that, you know, is that through something, through SIMCOG?
Yeah, you know, I would do it. Because then I can send, I can send the minutes. I can send a synopsis of the minutes. And I, you know, if you guys even want to do a, a voice vote, and then I can send them a synopsis of the minutes and show how supportive we are of this. And then they have to ratify it.
Okay.
So, yeah. A formal motion would be fine. It would be nice.
Jackie made a motion and I supported, right?
Right.
Okay. So we're already at, okay. So any-
What are we voting on?
That Tracy is going to be our representative at the SIMCOG.
Regional Clearinghouse Review Committee.
Which is dealing with the non-motorized paths and things like that.
And trails.
And trails. Biking, biking.
All right? Okay. Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Okay. The Planning Commission Amendment to Repairs and Maintenance of the Nonconforming-
Everybody received the information in a packet from Carlisle Wartman. I move to approve the amendment to Northville Township Zoning Ordinance, Article 65.0, Nonconformities, Section 65.05D, repairs and maintenance as presented in your packet.
I support.
Chick, motion. Otto, supported. Any discussion?
If I understand this correctly, it is very helpful for the taxpayers and property owners of Northville Township.
Right, it is.
If I understand it, I'm going to support.
Any other discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. On the number 12, the revised website contract. Looks like we're going to need a motion to allow Howard to sign this contract.
Madam Supervisor?
Yes?
The only, the only thing I will add is, if you see in the contract, if I'm not mistaken, it's the third, the third item in the contract. It says $350 contract migration services.
Correct.
If we go over the 100 pages, there's more than 100 pages on our existing website. We were going to try to clean off a bunch of stuff so that we didn't have to migrate it. Not so much from a cost perspective, so that we just didn't have to migrate everything over. But if we go over 100 pages, then I might go over that $350. It's a, it's $2 a page. It's, it's, I mean, we're, we're, every dollar counts. But I just wanted to let the board know that there's a possibility that, you know, we have 150 pages, we migrate. So then we'd go over by $100. Or we might have 10 extra documents over the 75 documents that's quoted there. So there's a possibility that that might increase just slightly. Maybe if you gave me a not to exceed number of, of, that would be helpful.
500?
Oh, is this, is this $2,570 right now? Is that the figure?
Yeah. Currently it's 25- Yeah, currently it's 25... 2,570. Uh, if you, if you gave me a not-to-exceed $500 on the content migration, that would be, I, I will work within those numbers.
Another 500?
No, another 150.
Huh?
Another 150.
How mu, how much would the total be?
Uh, 2,000, um, $720.
Huh?
2,720 dollars.
Jackie, are you doing the motion? Yeah, I can do this.
Okay.
Uh, make the motion to authorize Howard Fink to sign the contract with revised at the adjusted amount of $2,720. Adjusted amount of? $2,720.
I'll support that.
No, is this, is this per year, or, or what is this?
This is a two-year agreement.
Excuse me?
This is a two-year agreement.
Okay, so, um, out of motion, Inkstrom supported, is there any discussion?
Uh, where's the money coming from, for that?
This is included in the budget. The, the, the top price is 1,500, the annual fee is $720, uh, and the content migration is $350.
Yeah, so the annual...
A two-year agreement, a two-year agreement of 2,720, uh, and Jackie, I believe that, I believe that 720 is, uh...
For the second year.
Should be 1440, or is it 720?
No, the, the 1,500 is a one-time fee.
I know, but, but the service fee says per year, it says 720, if it's a two-year contract...
It's a two-year contract, so this is how, this is how IT contracts work. So, your, your one-time charge is, is 1,500, then you have another one-time charge of 350 for the migration. And then what comes on an annual basis is the 720.
I know, but...
So, the first year's 720, the second year's 720.
But that's not on here. The 720...
Um, it says an annual, it says revised annual tech support, software and subscription.
Well, ma'am, I'm just trying to say, if it's a two-year contract and it's $720 a year, it has to be 1,440 dollars.
Yep.
If it, if it, I mean, am I wrong, or?
The initial setup.
Yeah, well, they're saying it's a two-year agreement, so, they're not spelling it out the total of, uh, 1,440 dollars here, but it's assumed because it's a two-year agreement and the annual tech support and software subscription is 720 dollars a year.
Big spenders.
Did anyone else have any other questions? Yeah, this is one of our workshop items that we had already gone over.
We can add, add in the other 720 dollars.
Yeah, just add in the other 720 dollars, just in case, uh, and, uh, guys, I, I apologize, I mean, this, this is a very, very inexpensive solution for the township.
Yeah, it is. So, it would be a total contract amount of $3,440.
Well, I'm glad I was here for that.
Alright, so, any...
Any further discussion? Okay, um, those in favor? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, my God. That was twice, you guys. Am I, where am I?
All right, we're, we're gonna, I mean, give you a hundred.
I know.
I oppose.
Okay.
Yeah, it was funny. Yeah, I liked it on there for a second.
Okay, uh, on to number 13, the codification contract, as this is another item that was discussed at the workshop, um, and that we all thought it was a fantastic idea, so really all we need tonight is a motion to approve the contract. And Howard, are you signing this one? Um, I don't see a signature line on what was provided.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I know, it would help. It does. Yeah, it's on page 15. And then, do you have a total here?
There's no total, but it's $7,965, except for the, on the delivery balances, there's no price at all, so, who knows what the total is? I wouldn't know.
Right. Jackie, did you prepare a, a motion for this one already, too, or no?
Okay, I can, uh, I can...
A lot of big spending.
Make the motion to accept the codification contract of, uh, for MUNICODE and to authorize Howard Fink to sign the contract.
And this will not to exceed $11,480.
How much?
$11,480 as the base contract amount. That doesn't mean...
11,480?
11,480, that doesn't mean annual, that, that's not including annual fees moving forward, but the base contract amount on number one, if you see the, the, uh, on page seven, uh, at the footnotes, the number one, not to exceed $11,480.
As for two years?
No, that's just for doing it, yeah, like...
Yeah, for one year.
Setup.
Setup, base cost.
Well...
Do we want to...
It says payment-based cost split into, oh, four payments. Yeah, but we...
Yeah, so I would put, um...
And do we have the balances, or?
I would put codification base cost, not to exceed...
Where, where did you say the total was?
11,480. Page seven?
Page seven.
And then, Jackie, do you think we should put it in there?
Boy, it's awful tiny. They would embarrass to put that down, 11,400.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and also add into that, that, um, that there will be an annual fee going forward in addition to the base cost.
$150 per hour thereafter.
Okay, did anyone second Jackie's, uh, motion?
Second.
Okay, so, um, out of motion, Chick supported, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay, I know my next thing. Uh, number 14, approval of the police contract for the P-O-A-M and the C-O-A-M. P is for patrol and C is for command.
P is what?
Patrol and C is for command. And Bill, you're still here, you wanna pop in and...
Sure, it's, uh, pretty straightforward. Um, we actually had one meeting and, uh, what, the, the, the 3% for this current year has already been budgeted, um, and, and then the signing bonus portion, um, we, in the original budget, had anticipated, uh, putting, you know, off the top of my head, I wanna say it's 18,000 or 20,000 dollars into fund balance, so that signing bonus portion would come out of the fund balance. Um, and just as a reminder, the patrol hasn't seen, uh, or command hasn't, have not seen a raise in, I believe it's six or seven years, um, so, but this budget year, we were able to budget something in there for them. Um, ju, and just so the board knows, uh, the, myself, Howard, and the township, the new township attorney sat at the table for the township side of it, like I said, what we meet, maybe two hours at the most.
I can hear you. You and Howard and the township attorney?
Myself, the, the new township labor attorney, um, and, uh, pretty much...
Negotiated this?
Yeah, in about two hours, in an agreement with the, with the unions.
Well, yeah, you all think alike, yeah, I can see why, it would only take two, should've taken five minutes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the police contract for P-O-M and C-O-M, the changes to the P-O-M and C-O-M contracts, C-O-A-M.
And, and can you add to that, the, to authorize Marilyn and Shelley to sign that?
And authorize Marilyn and Shelley to sign the contract. I second.
We have a motion on the table from Chick, auto-supported, um, any...
It's Manning and, and what's Shelley, Shelley?
Inkstrom, well, it's...
Manning and Inkstrom. Be authorized, so it's the, the changes to the P-O-A-M and C-O-M police contract to be approved?
Yes.
With Shelley and Inkstrom signing the contract.
Do you have those changes, Lisa?
Yeah, I would say as presented to the township board.
Do you want the...
Okay.
I, I don't know, do you want me to, do you want me to list them all, or?
I don't, I don't know, that's...
You can, you can, you can just put, uh, refer to the packet, as indicated in the packet.
Well, I'm gonna name them, when, when, as soon as we can get to me, I'll, I'll be naming them all.
Well, we're having a discussion right now, which I took...
Discussion right now, two-year contract will expire June 20th, 2015. 3% raise, uh, at time of contract, ratified by the union, approved by the township board. 3% raise, July 1st, 2014. Adjust contract language to recognize the position of Public Safety Director. What does that mean?
So, both contracts currently say, this, this actually refers to number four, too, also.
Refers to what?
Refers to number four, so, the contract, throughout the contract, only speaks to the police chief, and so we really need the language to say director slash police chief. And as it relates to number four, we need the contract to say supervisor slash township manager.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, so is this, the supervisor gonna be out and just use the township manager, is that the way it's...
No, it'll, it'll have both.
Alright. Add, uh, time limits to union in step one of grievance procedure, I guess that's, they got seven days to bring their grievance if they want.
Correct.
Uh, signing bonus of $400 per full-time union member and $200 per part-time union member, so, we're fattening it up pretty good, they, they got a raise, plus they get $400 for signing, if you're full-time, 200, and, uh, uh, I, I would like to see a merit raise, instead of just across-the-board raise like this, everybody gets a raise, I guess the entire township is getting a raise, is that correct? I know this is only talking about this union, but...
This will leave, uh, the fire union, which is...
Excuse me?
The fire union doesn't expire until next year, so they, they did not receive a raise.
Okay.
Uh, Howard did not receive a raise, and I did not receive a raise in the township board.
No, but, but all, all the rest of the people that work in the office and everything, I, I don't know if they got it yet or not.
Yes, they did, as of July 1st.
They already got it, and I didn't, I didn't say anything about that. Thank you.
I'm sure you did.
Okay, so, are we gonna, uh, we, we, I think we need, did we even vote on that yet?
No.
No, thank you. Your long discussions threw me off there a little bit, sorry. Okay, so, we have a motion on the table that we need to vote on, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, then we are on to the PCI contract.
Madam Supervisor?
Uh, yeah, you wanna go ahead?
If that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so, I'm gonna try to be real brief. Um, so, a few months ago, Wayne alerted us to fluctuating energy rates. Um, turns out that the rates were fluctuating pretty significantly, uh, and that, uh, a, uh, once we started investigating those fluctuating rates, we found that we were under a contract with a gentleman named Chris B. and PCI Communications. Um, that contract essentially locks us into using him, uh, for any energy savings, and I may add, the contract also indicates that it locks us into energy savings pretty much on any utility that we have, um, that he would have to negotiate for us. So, if he, if he negotiated savings, then we have to pay him for those savings. In, in, in truth, in fact, and in reality, he has only worked on the, on the electricity. Um, I believe that the contract was written, uh, one-sided, I believe that the contract was only written to the benefit of PCI. Uh, I believe that, uh, 35% of the first-year savings, um, is, is a pretty significant amount. Um, I do not have the authority to break a contract. Um, what my suggestion is, is to allow the contract to play itself out over the next six months to essentially expire, uh, and then in that six-month timeframe, uh, we will, um, go ahead, we will send a notice of termination to PCI Communication that we intend to break the contract, or cancel the contract, uh, at the end of the six-month term, um, and, and then we will go ahead and, uh, negotiate our own energy savings. I will say that the contract is written in such a way that it has been around since 2009, I believe, it has an automatic renewal clause, um, and, uh, it is written in such a way that unless anybody really knew that the contract existed, the township would just continuously be locked in year after year after year after year. Um, I don't necessarily think that using energy brokers is a bad idea, I just think that in this particular case, you know, we haven't really been under a, a locked rate for quite some time. I had some concerns, uh, on the performance, um, and most importantly, even aside from all of that, I just think spending $14,459, um, is a big chunk of change for what I believe is work that we in the office can do, um, in a day or two.
Yeah, Wayne?
Uh, thank you, Howard, for going through that. Uh, I was told that Deborah Zuckiewicz signed this contract, but it was signed by Michelle Manning on 2002, 1109, so, uh, it was Manning that got us into this deal.
Um, I...
Huh?
Go ahead.
Uh, and, uh, I would ask if we can send this letter ASAP to, I mean, why wait for six months? Can't we send a letter now and say, "We are going to be done with you people in six months," or?
You give me the permission, we're sending the letter tomorrow, that we're gonna be done with them in six months.
Well, yeah, I think we should get it done and get the letter sent as soon as possible.
Yep, that's, our intention is to send the letter now and indicate that at the end of the contract...
Yeah, yeah.
We're expiring.
Have it sent with return receipt requested, or...
Yes, sir. Great idea.
And, uh, I would, uh, I, so you're, you're saying that you believe that, that the town, the township, uh, uh, office people could probably save us more than 35% just by...
Well, when you factor in what I think we can do, and then, and what that savings would be, and then you factor in the $14,459 that we would've had to pay to PCI, I think we come out significantly ahead, and that's $14,500 for one year. If we signed a two-year agreement with PCI, we're in the neighborhood of probably double that, 30,000. We signed a three-year agreement, we're at 45,000 dollars. I, I just think that this is, these are, these kind of, these kind of contracts, this contract was solely written for the benefit of PCI, it's not written for the benefit of the township.
Yeah, it was a bunch of smoking mirrors, remember? Would you, would you, uh, look into just going back to DTE, I mean, we all, I, ever, almost everybody uses DTE, and I'm just suggesting that, without trying to try this, this energy outfit, man energy outfit, just to check out their...
We've, we've checked out DTE, they're, they're too expensive.
Okay.
Um, one, sorry.
No, go finish, mine's just a quick question.
Uh, one thing I wanted to say, uh, Shelley's not here tonight. Um, Shelley signed this contract as the clerk, so, she did not sign this contract as it was her contract, she signed it with the understanding that she was the individual that signed contracts on behalf of the township. Now, whether or not that's correct or not, we can talk later, but she did not, from my understanding, she did not sign this contract with the idea that this was her contract and she was bringing this forward.
Well, her name's on the contract, so that's why I say...
That was my question, was, this, a contract would've had to been approved by the board, correct?
Yes, I mean...
Okay, it was, alright, so, and she just was the signer?
I don't think so.
Just like, yeah.
I don't think so.
Like, I'm forced to sign.
I don't think so, I think this was on her own.
Well, that's behind us, and let's, you know, obviously move forward, and thank you for bringing that to our attention, so it can be corrected.
But, thank you, Howard, for all your hard work.
Howard, how much does, this is just, how, how much does PCI make off of borrowing something like this? Do you know?
Uh, they would've made the, uh, $14,459, so they'd made 35% of the first-year savings, and if a, if we signed a one-year contract, it would be 35% of 41,000. If we signed a two-year contract with them, it would be, uh, 35% of 74,000 dollars.
Oh, wow.
If we signed a three-year contract with them, it would be 35% of...
So, it is smoking mirrors?
Yeah, I, I, that's a judgment call. I think this was, I think this was a bad decision and a bad contract that was signed, and I think it was, uh, for the benefit of, of only one party.
You're absolutely right, Howard. There's probably...
By the board in 2009. Thank you. It was approved by a board in 2009. I can't hear you. You, you voted to approve it with the rest of the board.
I apologize to Shelley.
There, there's probably a place for this if the numbers weren't so god-awful, I mean, if it wasn't 35%, I mean, if, if, there, there probably is a, a group that does a good job doing this, and if it were coming in at 5% of savings, or 10% of savings, that would be something, because you, you're, you're removing the administrative task from, from people to, to do all that legwork, great, but... Great, but 35%, that's an awful lot.
But no one's going to work for nothing. Howard's going to get our gang to do it for nothing.
Okay, we need a motion. Jackie, do you have one? Do you want me to do one?
Yeah, I can do it. Authorizing, make the motion to authorize Howard Fink to send a letter of termination to PCI acknowledging that we will no longer need their services at the end of the contract.
Should we, Howard, do you think we need to add in the contract, you know, allow the contract to expire also?
Oh, and allow the contract to expire.
I'll second that. Auto motioned, Engstrom supported. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. On to the next one, number 16. The tax sale properties from Washtenaw County. Howard and I took some time this afternoon and checked out the individual properties that had been listed in the package and basically came to the conclusion that none of the properties would be of interest. Most of them are, I don't know how to say it, I mean, just underwater, some of them are.
I was going to say, have you checked them out? I hope you brought your hip boots.
Yeah. So we did, you know, unless anyone else has, you know, has checked any of them out and let us know that we missed anything? Yeah, go ahead.
Number four, the last page. If you look down where number four is on the page, and if you look across to the right of there, that's where Seven Mile comes through from...
Correct.
The, um...
Eagle Gardens.
Eagle Gardens. And if you see where that, if you see where the bottom on the left-hand side is 8350, where the township, where we are right now.
Right, yeah, Seven Mile connect.
If you go, if you went out here, like we talked about someday, possibly meeting up with Seven Mile Road, going across this, all these lots, that one lot, number four, might come in, might be a problem if they sell it to somebody else. I mean, you know, I'm just saying.
But you know that that's all, you know, old plant, you know, like there's no, there's no roads there, but there are no roads there.
Only Ash...
I was going to ask that, because there's no roads there.
Only Ash and Garfield go down to Birch, half of Garfield. The rest of them stop at...
At Ash.
At Ash.
Right.
So only, only the one and a half roads there go down to Birch. And there are no other roads in there. And you're absolutely right. But I'm just saying if we ever, if we supposedly put this road in, but I agree, probably, I don't know who would ever buy it.
Right. Do you know the story of why that is planted like that?
Yeah, it was planted in 1917. And the only outlet of it was on the north side, which is a little 20-foot, Lakeview it's called. It was a keyhole deal. That whole neighborhood had just one 20-foot road going out of that neighborhood, which goes out to...
Lakeview?
To east shore.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, although Walnut, only half of Walnut's in this project. So Walnut went out also.
Okay.
But those are...
Well, like, all these people that, whoever owned this land originally back in 19...
Well, I don't think it was sold then.
No.
And eventually they went on the tax deed. It seems like our tax people, I don't know if they could clean it up, but maybe our tax person could tell us before the taxes start going bad on these to just take them off the, take them off the roll.
Take them off the roll, right.
So we don't have to do this. But at any rate...
Right, yeah, because even over on the Horseshoe Lake ones, I mean, we even stopped and talked to Troy, and he's like, five and six are underwater.
I don't want to spend a lot of time on that. But it looks to me, are these prices that I think I can read here, like is it 300, 200, 600?
Correct.
Butternut, butternut is not, butternut. But Raymond and Elm and Beachway, whatever the other one is. Never Horseshoe Lake. So did anyone contact...
Howard, did you ever come up?
Handle Horseshoe Lake people?
We talked to George Brown today. But we didn't, we talked to George Brown.
Oh, okay.
But we didn't contact, you know, the whole association. But we spoke with George.
Was he interested in any way?
No, sir. The only thing I'd make, I'm not advocating to purchase any of these properties. The only reason I brought them forth was Shelley had indicated to me that previously there was talk about, on the first page, or excuse me, second page, that that area being designated as a park. And so that was, that was the only thing that she was going to say. She's not here, so I'm still not advocating to purchase the properties.
Yeah, we've been buying them up for years, so, you know.
Oh, we have?
Yes. But, but I, so I think...
So every time it comes up, it's always you?
We'll wait till Shelley comes back, maybe, or...
Well, the sales, the seventh?
Yeah, the sales on...
Well, that's fine. It's easier to buy it, it's better to buy them from, it's better to buy them on the tax sale.
Well, right, yeah.
Than it is for us to buy them, yeah.
Well, because, well, a little more history, I mean, do we own a lot of that land back there? Do we need to, do we need to grab the last few pieces?
We own a lot of it.
I don't, yeah, my guess is it's not the last few situation. My guess is, and I just don't know. I asked Shelley about it, she had mentioned that they'd been buying up those properties because there had been talk about being a park there. I don't know which ones we own and which ones we don't. I can certainly update the board. And if for some reason there's, you know, an absolute need to make a decision in a week or a week and a half, I can do that.
I think there is a list available.
Yeah, well, we have a, right.
8/23 is the auction day.
It'll probably be online, isn't it?
What's that?
The auction, the auction's probably online, isn't it?
It's my first, this is my first time dealing with the county on the auction. I don't know.
I think it's, I think it's online.
And because they've got it grouped together, is that like, you know, the minimum bid, they're saying there's that 5,100, do these have to be all sold together?
No, they don't have to be all...
I was just going to ask you.
Yeah.
Well, we don't want the Horseshoe Lakes though.
Right, you don't want, yeah.
They don't want...
We don't want any of them.
No, yeah, you don't want the Horseshoe Lake, right.
No. It would be no benefit to the township to do it.
It says all bidding is done online.
Yeah. But...
I'm sorry, what was that?
It says all bidding is done online.
But just to clarify, the township does own several properties in Horseshoe Lake, also, I think about 70 of them.
About 70 of them? Didn't we, who brought up that we should probably look at the list of all the properties that the township does own to, you know, see what we need to do or not do?
Yeah, because I think when they thought about building the park and putting the park back there and everything, that was probably at a time when there wasn't opportunities to get a park and that type of thing. I think as you go on, you have to reevaluate, do we really need this? Do we not need this?
But I'm wondering, I'm wondering how many the county holds, you know, how bad are they going to treat us? And is this why I'm saying, you know, I mean, if we, you know, they're just dragging us along four, five, six every year, you know?
But according to what Shelley told me, if we, and I might be saying this wrong, that if we get them in a tax sale, we can't go and turn around and sell them.
If we buy them at the tax sale, but not if we buy them before the sale.
Right. I think there was a, there's some stipulation.
But do we want them, do we want them, own property to sell them?
Right.
Don't we mean we buy these just to have the park, in my opinion? I mean, we're not going to buy them to sell them.
Right. So I just thought, we may have to relook at, why do we have these properties? What was the initial intent?
Okay.
I mean, especially the Horseshoe Lake, what was the initial...
Bills.
I don't know.
Well, George had said even the Horseshoe Lake had bought a few of the lots that are basically underwater to prevent anything from ever happening over there. You know, that would stay in its natural state, isn't it?
Exactly.
Yep. All right, well, that takes, is everyone done on that subject? Okay. Let's move to number 17, the bills.
Okay. Number on the first page...
Are you unpaid?
First page, unpaid, paid, what is this? B E R E N D S. Hendrix, suit, insurance, $138,184. Does anybody know what that is?
What was the...
Is it underpaid?
It's underpaid. It's a one, two, three, four, five, six, one thousand on the first page.
That is our liability insurance premium.
Liability insurance for a year?
Yeah, that's probably, I don't have, I apologize, Wayne, I don't have the contract in front of me. $138,000, my guess is, my guess is that's probably the yearly premium. It might be a, it might be a biannual premium. I just don't have it in front of me.
Might be a financial...
It might be a six-month or it might be a one-year premium.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Turn to page two, top of the page, SEMCOG, I'd like to mention that again, membership fees, $1,171. You know, all these government agencies, they only have the right to fail. You know, we spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on these dues. It just bothers me that we are just perpetuating all these damn government programs. It's sickening. Next one is Washtenaw County Transportation, membership dues, $1,000. What's that all about? One, two, three, the fourth one down on page two.
Are you unpaid?
Page two, fourth one down. Washtenaw Area Transportation Membership Due.
Yeah, it's WATS, it's Washtenaw Area Transportation Study, it's membership dues for WATS.
For what?
The Washtenaw Area Transportation Study.
Why are we paying the $1,000 dues for that?
Well, I mean, this will be my opinion, but I believe that both SEMCOG and WATS are valuable agencies for us to pay dues to for two reasons. One is, WATS is our advocacy locally when it comes to transportation dollars. So we will get WATS involved in the conversation with MDOT and the bridge replacement over North Territorial and 23. That's a group that, the part of their job is to advocate for transportation issues for the local Washtenaw area. SEMCOG has what they call a TIP. And the TIP is where all the projects go into. WATS has to approve all the projects before they get into the TIP. And it's always been my opinion that you want to, as much as possible, influence the TIP. We just put Tracy on the SEMCOG committee and hopefully he will now help influence the TIP as it relates to non-motorized path and bikes and trails and things of that nature. So I understand where Wayne is coming from. I do agree that every time you have a membership due, you ought to ask, "Why are we paying it?" Because I do think there are some that, you know, don't provide significant value. These two, on the other hand, I think are probably a good idea for us to be a part of.
Number, I disagree with you, but thank you. I don't disagree that some of them are bad. I think all these government agencies, we should not support them. They should be able to die if they can't support themselves. We should all have the right to go broke. Okay, down and halfway, I know you weren't going to be able to help me with this, but I want to mention it. Clerical department, super election, $558. Now Shelley, as far as I know, the school board is paying for all of this election. I would like to know if we can get this cut out of here because Shelley also worked, I'm not talking about her behind her back, but she also worked the election. So is she paying herself a check for working? You know, it's just, I think we need to pay attention here, what's happening. Not suggesting that she did anything wrong, but it should be clear of what these people are, how she's getting paid, who signed the check, and is the school giving us back the money? Page three, top of the page, another 596 for clerical. Now, I don't know, maybe that's for her clerk. You know, these are the questions I would ask her if she was here. So maybe it's her clerk's wages, I don't know. Would you have any idea, Howard?
I'm sorry, I do not know.
Okay, thank you, sir. Creative Cars, page six, one, two, three, fourth one down. Creative Cars, $204. Then it says Cruiser, $330. Now is that, is that Creative Cars also, would you think?
MIF is...
Mr. White?
Cruisers and Creative Cars are two different companies.
Oh, okay, so Cruisers is a different company.
Right, Cruisers is in Brighton. They do our lighting and decal work and computer work.
I was just wondering why it didn't say Creative Cars. I didn't, I didn't remember ever doing that, okay. CP, page seven, third one down, CMP distributors equipment, $13,872.50. Does anybody know what that is? It's under law enforcement.
I believe that was the bulletproof vests.
Bulletproof vests, okay. $13,000, the flashlights were $113 a piece. We've got a dozen of them. I'm getting close to being done here, folks. Except I'd like to have all the people out there in TV land know that it costs you $569,546 and 7 cents to run your township this month. Thank you.
I did have one question. On the last page, well, not last page, on page 10, does anyone know what the inspector expenses are?
The inspector, they're, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Was it Bono?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are from Pittsfield Township that inspect the buildings.
Okay, thank you.
They're in the building department.
All right. Does anyone else have any comments, anything on the bills? No? All right. Let's go to our second call to the public. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak? Okay, thank you.
Maybe our cameraman.
Yes. Board member comments. Tracy, you got anything tonight?
Nothing tonight.
Jackie?
Nothing, thank you.
Wayne?
Howard, if we, not any, you said you were going to send in on that title insurance on Main Street, you were going to contact that number that was on that title insurance. Did we ever do anything on that project?
We did. I have a number, but no action was taken because we were going to have it on the workshop agenda.
Oh, okay.
And Paul Burns was here to talk about it. And I know it was an issue that the board, you know, that was an issue that the board wanted to discuss and we didn't get to it and so we haven't done anything.
We didn't get to it that night.
We didn't get to it that night and I've taken no action and I'm not going to take action.
Okay, okay, I understand. We went home early.
Yes, sir.
Well, we didn't really go home early, but, okay. I already said I would like to thank Sam and Ann for the use of their boats. I'd like to remind the people in TV land that the voters turned down the school millage, 873 no's, 406 yeses, with more than two-thirds voting against it. I'd like to remind people to keep in mind our people that's in uniform and I'd like to remind them to shop and use local services. Thank you.
Great. Kathy, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Janet?
I do, just one comment. I just wanted to make my position clear. I didn't know if I did or not. For Ms. Lupai, I'm all for helping her with her signage. I also believe because the township creates ordinances, the board approves ordinances, that the township should be complying with those ordinances. And anytime we can satisfy the township and the... And anytime we can satisfy the township and the Ms. Lupai in this instance by keeping her in compliance, that we should do that.
Great, thank you.
We knocked her out of compliance.
Okay, I think we're ready to adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. We knocked her out of compliance and so...
All right, hold on. We need to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Agreed. Second? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.